We move then from Article 10 to Article 11 where no motion is expected. And so we come to Article 12. We have a very, an unusual procedural situation here and for the next period of time. I would like to call everyone's attention to the handout which is available on the tables, which is a single sheet which says, "Schedule of Presentations for Articles 12, 13, and 14" on the front and has a chart showing the landfill site on the back. Our usual proceeding, please if you would listen carefully, this is unusual. Our usual way of proceeding is of course to take up an article, to have full discussion of it, and come to a vote, and then move on to the next article. Articles 12, 13, and 14 however, each present alternative proposals for the future of the use of our former landfill and for school transportation here in town. So we're going to be following an unusual proceeding, procedure of having initial factual presentations on each one of those three alternatives. As set forth here on the schedule of presentations, we will first hear, and you can see that there are seventeen listed aspects to this discussion. We will first hear a presentation of Article 12, eight minutes, then a presentation of Article 13, eight minutes, then a presentation of Article 14, eight minutes. With those twenty-four minutes of foundation, we will then turn to hearing presentations from various town boards and committees that have studied this and thought about it. So we will hear in order from the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, the Public Works Commission, the Natural Resources Commission, and the Historical Commission. That should take a little bit more than a half an hour. And with that as a foundation, then we will begin our discussion of Article 12 and proceed through that until we come to a vote. So I would like to first recognize for the presentation of Article 12, presented by the Board of Selectmen, Selectman Wean, the motion, "It moves that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey to the Walden Woods Project and/or a similar conservation organization. A conservation restriction pursuant to Chapter 184, Sections 31, 33 of our general laws on terms and conditions agreeable to the selectmen on all or a portion of the parcel of land 755 Walden Street identified as Parcel 4039 comprised of approximately thirty-five point four acres. Such conservation restriction to permit the town to carry out solar energy generation and public works activities at the site. And further to authorize the selectmen to accept a sum of not less than two point eight million dollars as compensation for the conservation restriction, said some to be credited by the treasurer to the general fund as required by law." This motion involves real estate and so will eventually require a two-thirds vote for passage. Mr. Wean?
Jeff Wean.
Is there a second? I know that there is. Mr. Wean.
Jeff Wean, 100 Garfield Road. Well, good evening. Tonight, Article 12 proposes to sell a conservation restriction on the former town landfill to the Walden Woods Project. Walden Woods Project is a nonprofit organization founded in nineteen ninety, working to protect the environs of Walden Pond. The town and Walden Woods have been discussing the sale for over thirteen years. Here's an aerial view of the site. You can see the landfill, you can see the pond, you can see Thoreau's Cabin, the site of Thoreau's Cabin, and the site of the proposed bus depot. You can also see that the site is completely surrounded by conservation land. The property consists of thirty-five point four acres. Twenty-five of those acres were used as a landfill. The landfill was closed in nineteen ninety-four, was capped in two thousand, limiting the use for thirty years. And Public Works is charged with monitoring the site. Among the many reasons why the site is worth protecting, it borders a national historic landmark of international significance, Walden Pond State Reservation, which is visited annually by six hundred thousand people, though scarred. The ecological restoration of the site is underway and wildlife is returning. In fact, there are wildlife corridors that pass directly through the site. And the site abuts Goose Pond, which is a fragile environment. If the conservation restriction passes, then Walden Woods will be producing further trails which will connect existing and future trails to be constructed. The terms of the conservation restriction, or CR, CR preserves property as far as possible in its natural state, usually in perpetuity, by limiting development of the site. The town will continue to own this property. My law school property professor used to call real estate a bundle of sticks. And what we would be doing here is selling some of those sticks to Walden Woods and we'd be keeping some of them for ourselves. For those sticks, Walden Woods would pay two point eight million dollars. And the CR would be held jointly by the Walden Woods Project and the Concord Law, Concord Land Conservation Trust. The CR has to be approved by the Natural Resources Commission, the Board of Selectmen, and the Commonwealth. Restrictions in the CR include the prohibition on building and development, with limited exceptions. There'd be no cutting trees, there'd be no excavation, things like that. And of course, there'd be no bus depot. However, all of the existing Concord Works public, Concord Works activities would continue indefinitely. And the three thousand kilowatt solar facility currently planned for the site could be installed, renewed, improved, and replaced forever. This is the area used by Concord Public Works. Next slide. And these are the current uses of the Concord Public Works listed at the site. And I hope you read all this because we're actually going to move to the next slide, which is the area to be covered by the Tecta Solar Facility. You can see it's a massive piece of the site, a true concession by Walden Woods. This site can be occupied indefinitely by solar. The 2001 Landfill Study Committee report noted that the town should recognize the landfill as an important and significant asset to Walden Pond and give serious consideration to making the landfill part of the Walden Pond State Reservation. The Open Space and Recreation Plans Report said that the former landfill was the first priority regarding designating municipal land as permanent conservation land, especially in view of the international significance of Walden Pond. Here are some data points on the purchase price. The current, the town carries this property on its books at about three point four million dollars. John Avery did an appraisal basically of what a developer would pay for this site if he were going to build houses there. It's currently his own residential. He appraised it at one point four for that purpose. He also appraised the conservation restriction itself, actually a lesser version of it, for nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The purchase price that Walden Woods is paying is two point eight million dollars. And just as another data point, the town is purchasing the Grace property in West Concord, which is about two and a half times the size of this property. We're purchasing, getting a fee interest in that property, and we're paying one point two million dollars for that. The Board of Selectmen believes that this is a fair price. Some people have said it's not enough. But of course, if you believe that the site should be preserved as far as possible in its natural state, then you'll be thrilled that someone will pay to do what you should do anyway. The estimated timetable for the, for this transaction, we would try to sign the purchase agreement by June 1st. The deposit would then be payable. We'd like to have a draft conservation restriction by September and have that reviewed in October by the Natural Resources Commission and the Board of Selectmen. Hopefully, they approve it and we send it to the state. And we would hope to get the Commonwealth's approval by the end of the year. And we hope to get payment from Walden Woods within a hundred and eighty days thereafter. That's what the contract will call for. And then we would then file the restriction following payment. Now you will hear tonight that we should not sell a conservation restriction on the landfill because we never know what the town may need the property for. But of course, on that theory, the town will never do anything with the property because there could always be something else that we'd better to do with it that we haven't thought of yet. Personally, I think that we will someday do something with this property. And what Article 12 asks you to do is to make a decision about that tonight. In putting Article 12 on the warrant, the Board of Selectmen has tried to fashion a reasonable compromise between town, on the one hand, and conservation and recreation goals and objectives on the other. We believe the purchase price is fair. We have provided for the maximum amount of solar currently possible on the site with flexibility for replacements, upgrades, and changes in solar technology. We have preserved all the public works activities currently on the site. And we hope potentially by, at the, at the Graceland, we'll be able to accommodate future public works activities that can't be accommodated at the landfill. Some boards like Public Works will oppose Article 12. Those boards have a job or a mission to do, and Article 12 may be inconsistent with that mission. But you don't have a job or a mission, and you, you don't have to look at things from a very narrow viewpoint. You can take a much broader viewpoint. You can vote your conscience and your, your principles on Article 12. In Walden, Thoreau writes in the chapter, this is in the chapter on ponds. He talks about how the wood choppers have laid waste to the shores of Walden Pond. Now, for many a year, he says, "There will be no more rambling through the aisles of the wood. My muse may be excused if she is silent henceforth. How can you expect the birds to sing when their groves are cut down?" But he's impressed by the woods' ability to renew themselves. Quote, "Where a forest was cut down last winter," he writes, "another is springing up by its shore as lustily as ever. God rounded this water with his hand, deepened it, and clarified it in his thought, and in his will bequeathed to conquer." Let us prove ourselves worthy of this bequest. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wean. So that is the initial presentation on Article 12 by the selectmen. Article 13 is being moved by the School Committee. Article 13, Miss Peta moves that the town vote to approve the sum of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Concord Public Schools Capital Need Stabilization Fund established by vote under Article 32 of the 2006 Annual Town Meeting. This money, the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, to be expended under the direction of the Concord School Committee for construction and original equipping of school transportation facilities, including parking, fueling, maintenance, and administration, and any necessary design, engineering, planning, and related services. And further, that the town transfer custody from the Board of Selectmen to the School Committee of land adjacent to the former cell tower support building identified by the town of Concord as an area of approximately two point five acres. Make this available to the school department for transportation services on the property at 755 Walden Street, shown on the assessor's maps as Parcel 4039 and as shown on the plan prepared by Niche Engineering dated April 8, 2013. Again, this, because it involves, in this case, borrowing, would require a two-thirds vote. Is there a second? I see that there is. Ms. Spada.
Maureen Spada, 65 Hayward Mill Road, Chair of the Concord Public Schools Committee, speaking for the committee.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 13 is a request to appropriate nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars from existing funds in the Capital Need Stabilization Fund. In conjunction with a portion of funds from Article 8, it provides a total budget of approximately one point four million dollars to develop Phase 1 of a two-year plan for a bus depot at the former town landfill. The School Committee voted unanimously to support Article 13. Building a depot at the town landfill provides an opportunity to continue in our owner-operated model of busing and reflects the School Committee and the administration's commitment to keep transportation in-house. As concluded by the Citizens Transportation Committee, the planned depot will provide a permanent place to house district-owned transportation operations. It includes parking for thirty-six buses, forty-two cars, a fuel station, a maintenance garage, and office facilities for bus drivers. It provides an alternative option to outsourcing transportation. Currently, we're operating in an interim or temporary transportation mode with leased facilities in Acton and Billerica. This mode is not efficient operationally, financially, or environmentally. We estimate that an extra three hundred and fifty to four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars will be spent in annual operating costs while we function in this mode. The interim mode, particularly the distance to the parking facility in Acton, requires additional consumption of an estimated sixteen thousand gallons of fuel per year and an added one hundred and eighty to two hundred and forty tons of CO2 emissions. The new depot would eliminate these issues and extend the useful life of the buses by reducing fleet mileage. The Transportation Advisory Committee researched a range of options for long-term transportation and evaluated a range of issues related to individual sites. A number of properties had multiple reasons for eliminating them. Sandborne School was researched, but it's in the groundwater conservancy district, in the middle of a neighborhood, with heavy pedestrian use and traffic concerns. It includes athletic fields for soccer, baseball, and lacrosse. We heard from teachers, parents, and neighbors, they do not consider it a properly acceptable place for a bus depot. And for those reasons, it was eliminated from consideration. The Ripley School has groundwater conservancy restrictions and wetlands. It closely abuts neighborhoods, and it is in use for playgrounds, baseball, and soccer. Both Strawberry Hill Road and Berkland are owned by the schools, and they are large enough, and the land is flat, and it is buildable. However, because of the historic and agriculture use and the value placed on these properties, we concluded that they are not appropriate places to place a depot, and they were eliminated. Here are some of the additional properties that were considered and eliminated. The Regional School Committee has voted not to place a depot on the new CCHS campus. A requirement for our MSBA reimbursement is predicated on meeting specific prerequisites. If we don't, the grant rate could be subject to change. Part of our reimbursement includes one point six million dollars in mass chips for meeting specific environmental criteria. Mass Chips is an independent third party, and they will review and evaluate the campus plan after the project is complete to determine our mass chips reimbursement. To be eligible for this money, we must meet their specified criteria, including an anti-idling policy. Mass Chips' focus is on sustainable and environmentally responsible building. Adding a bus depot to the campus may violate the mass chips prerequisites because on cold mornings, buses need to idle in the morning to warm up. And we do not know if idling buses would violate mass chips prerequisite. The MSBA grant for the existing project funding agreement do not have a bus depot on the high school campus. The entire CCHS campus is in the groundwater conservancy district. To put a depot on the campus, the region would need approval from the Zoning Board of Appeals to amend our existing permit or to issue a new permit. The Zoning Board of Appeals has complete discretion to allow or to disallow the storage of fuel and increase in, potential increase in impervious surfaces such as parking lots that would be used for buses. Here's an aerial view of the campus. An analysis of the campus for possible depot locations, you can see that Area A, Area B, Area E, oh, sorry. Area A, Area B, and Area E are in use or will be used for the new high school. Locations F and G border wetlands. Locations D1 and D2 are sloped and not flat enough for parking buses. Location C is a planned tennis court, and adding a parking lot there would require approval of the zoning board because we would be increasing our impervious surface. And location F, H, sorry, H, the student parking lot, is the only viable location for a depot. Turner Construction has planned the use of that parking lot into its logistical planning, its budget, and its schedule. Changing Turner's plan would increase costs of the building project because they have planned the use of the portion of the campus for the entire building and demolition timeframe. Once construction is complete, the landfill under that parking lot will be remediated, and then it would be available as a parking lot. We estimate that waiting until the lot is ready for building would cost a total of one point four to two point one million dollars in our operating budget, spread over the next four to five years until that land is available. This would be in addition to the construction costs for actually building the depot. And finally, both Concord and Carlisle would need to approve the building of the depot. The Carlisle Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee have stated that they are not interested in building a depot on the high school campus. The School Committee has voted not to place a depot on the high school campus because it may violate our mass chips rating. We would need approval from the ZBA. The cost of waiting for the student parking lot is too high, and the Carlisle Board of Selectmen and FinCom do not support the idea. Therefore, we've eliminated the high school campus from consideration. The Citizens Transportation Committee provided this recommendation regarding citing the depot at the town landfill. Recognizing that the School Committee has eliminated, eliminated the high school campus for a depot, they conclude that the town landfill is the next best site. This is an aerial view of the proposed locations, with areas, areas pointing to the proposed depot site, Route 2, and Walden Pond. Of the nearly ten thousand cars that move through the Route 2 and Route 126 intersection per day, the depot would add about three hundred additional cars and buses. Most of those are during off-rush hour time and not during the busy Walden Pond summer season. We've planned a budget for planting trees to lessen visual or noise impact to Goose Pond, Route 2, or 126. As part of the feasibility study for this project, Niche Engineering hired an independent firm to estimate the project costs. Their estimate is at two point two million dollars. We plan to phase the project over two years. In this schedule, for year one, we'd expect to complete parking, fuel station, the road, and security. We would use a temporary trailer for the bus drivers and expect to spend one point four, two million dollars this year, with funds combined from Article 13 and 8. We expect this could be complete for the beginning of the school year in 2014. In year two, we plan to complete the project by building a maintenance facility with permanent room for staff. We expect to utilize funds from the capital budget and would not request an override. We are, finally, we are sensitive to the concerns about placing a depot on this land. If Article 13 is approved, we will work hard to respect the importance of the land, and we ask for your support on Article 13. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Spada. And purely for clarification and information purposes, you may have noted, there's a discrepancy between the motion as it appears on the screen, the motion in the handbook and the handout, and the motion I read. The motion in the handout and the motion that I read out loud are correct. The motion as it appears on the screen is not the motion precisely that we're voting on. Perhaps it says that the school department doesn't get an A-plus in overheads for, for that, that one, one showing. So we've now had the second of the two, of the three presentations. We'll now hear the initial presentation on Article 14, which is a citizen petition. Petitioner Phoebe Hamm and Citizen Neil Rasmussen. If you would identify yourself first, please, both of you with name and address.
Phoebe?
Yeah?
Identify yourself.
Oh, Phoebe Hamm, 80 Mustafiel Road, Concord, Mass. It's clear that the town...
Phoebe, hold on.
Neil Rasmussen, 393 Estabrook Road.
And if you could wait one more minute, the, the motion is under Article 14. Ms. Hamm moves that the town request the Concord Public School Committee and the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee to build or replace on the regional high school property the Concord School Bus Transportation Department with the three-bay maintenance garage and modular administration building, which were demolished in February and March of 2013, and to make parking available for all of the school buses needed for the K-8 and the district high school and any other related vehicles. Please proceed. Oh, is there a second?
It is clear that the town needs a place to keep our buses. Local parking of the bus fleet will minimize fuel costs and keep bus routes, keep bus routes short. In searching for a place to park the buses, I feel that the high school is still the best location. There are a number of shared goals we, we can all agree that are important. We have gone through a difficult and complicated process to start our new high school project, and nobody wants to do anything that will interfere with this important project. We want to have a green, healthy campus for our children. We don't want to damage our natural resources like the Walden Pond area unless it is the last possible alternative. And finally, we must have a solution that makes financial sense. For thirty-five years, we've had the bus depot on the high school campus. It was removed to make room for the new school. The school project has no provision for funding or replacing the bus depot. So it needs to be a separate initiative with new funding. This, this slide shows that it is no longer possible to rebuild the bus depot at the old location because it would overlap the new high school. If we, if we put it at the high school, it must be in a different location on the campus. But we are fortunate, there actually is another location at the high school, the current teacher-student parking lot. This site was considered by the School Committee and the Citizens Transportation Committee, and they both found that if the bus depot is located on the high, high school property, this is the best place. We want to consider, if we want to consider keeping the bus depot at the high school, we can't interfere with the current building project. We need to ensure that it is a separate project with a separate schedule and budget. We must have a school budget project that has separate permitting so the current building permits are not affected. We need to make sure that the bus depot project does not interfere with the construction of the new high school. The only reason we can't park the buses at the teacher-student parking lot right now is that there is not enough overall parking space to accommodate the buses, construction workers, faculty, and students. We can either create some temporary parking, or we can wait until the high school project becomes more complete and more parking space becomes available. Careful coordination between temporary parking, student parking, the athletic field lot, and the BD Center might allow us to start this bus depot before the completion of the high school. Worst case is that we can't park the buses on the campus till the high school is finished. To discuss whether this, whether this proposal is technically feasible, I'm handing over the presentation now to Neil Rasmussen.
Thank you. After the Citizens Transportation Committee recommended location of the bus depot at the high school in their report, not the landfill, the high school, in their report, a number of technical objections were put forth as to why it was impossible in a presentation titled, "Why Can't the Bus Depot Be on the School Campus?" It was presented to the School Committee and other boards and caused many to believe that it was technically infeasible to locate the bus depot at the high school. However, further review finds the arguments made in that presentation are inaccurate, and the objections can be readily overcome. The technical objections fundamentally focus on these three issues, which I'll briefly address in turn. The School Committee's own report clearly states on page 34 that impervious service is not an issue at the former student parking site, which is the same site Phoebe showed to you and was recommended by the CTC. The presentation suggests it would not be possible to store fuel at the site due to groundwater conservancy issues. However, their presentation also says on page seven that such use is permitted by right as long as the school follows some simple requirements. But no matter what, we can park buses at the school. And the worst case is that fueling is off-site, as it is in many bus depots, but this was not considered. The School Committee presentation suggests that maintaining school buses on the campus would risk our CHIPS Green School Rating, which would cost some or all of our school funding. They base this on specific citations said to be in the CHIPS standard. The problem is that they made a mistake, and the actual standard says the opposite and specifically allows warm-up and maintenance operations. Furthermore, just two weeks ago, the State School Building Authority issued a letter saying that their funding would not be affected by the location of the bus depot. The worst case is that we park the buses but don't build the maintenance facilities until after the high school is complete. It's hard to believe that we would consider building another dirty diesel bus depot. We have the opportunity to make a much greener bus depot. As a town, we need to look at natural gas as a fleet fuel like our neighboring towns are looking. We could also build a solar canopy over the bus depot that would generate green energy while visually screening the buses from view. How, how can we possibly consider our school to be green if, to build it, we deforest and pave the last remaining town-owned forest near Walden Pond? Putting the bus depot back at the high school where it's been for thirty-five years has a huge potential taxpayer cost advantage when compared with building it at the Walden site. While it's likely that our interim expenses would be higher at the high school, the lower development expense and the benefit of the value of the conservation restriction discussed earlier on the landfill results in a savings of millions. Restoring the bus depot to the high school need not put our existing project at risk. It saves a lot of taxpayer funds. It can meet and even exceed the green objectives we've set. It avoids deforestation at Walden, and we have plenty of time to figure out the design and permitting issues because we already have a multi-year commitment to locate the buses off-campus. Two studies... Two studies were done on bus depot siting, the TAC and CTC studies, you heard referred earlier. The TAC study did not consider the high school site at all because the school committee asked them not to. The CTC study actually found the high school to be the best site in their report, which I have here and anybody can read, it's online, but later withdrew that site when the school committee told them their conclusion was not acceptable. The town meeting felt it was a good idea to keep buses in-house. In competing Article 13, we're faced with a bus depot proposal that will cost the taxpayers $2.2 million, deforest part of the Walden Woods, and make us lose the opportunity to collect $2.8 million from a conservation restriction. Carlisle has sent a town a letter saying they don't expect to pay for any of that. This article represents a win-win alternative that is greener and cheaper, and there are a growing number of us who believe it deserves your thoughtful consideration. And I'd just like to add that Phoebe Hamm, I think, is like our town conscience, always challenging us to make thoughtful and better decisions. In this case, there are many of us who think she's really identified a significant opportunity that I hope you will consider.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We have now finished on our presentation schedule, items 1, 2, and 3, and you can see why we have a dilemma. Unanimous school, unanimous Board of Selectment urging adoption of Article 12, unanimous school committee urging adoption of Article 13, and a citizen petition for 14. As the next part of our presentation, we're going to hear very short, much shorter presentations from five different town boards and organizations that have studied this. So, we will hear from the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, the Public Works Commission, Natural Resources Commission, and the Historical Commission. And I call on first Lynn Salinger, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lynn Salinger, 75 Pleasant Street, Chair of the Concord Finance Committee.
Please proceed.
The Concord Finance Committee has carefully weighed the trade-offs among Articles 12, 13, and 14. We took a broad view, including the following. Under Article 12, the town stands to gain one-time revenues of $2.8 million from the conservation restriction. The Finance Committee believes that price represents fair compensation in today's market. We also had good assurance from Walden Woods that full payment will be received within six months of state approval of the CR. We note that the parcel's future value may be higher than indicated by the town's appraisal, given its unique geographic and environmental character. Its value will be significant to our town after expiry of the 30-year dormancy period required of landfills, which is 17 years from now. Under Article 13, capital costs of $2.2 million are needed to build a facility to park and service school buses at the landfill. And if Article 13 fails and the school committee contracts with private transportation providers, an additional $200,000 to $400,000 per year will likely be needed in annual operating expenses. From a short-term financial perspective, it would seem to be in the town's best interest to sell the CR, vote no action on 13 or 14, and contract for private bus services. However, we share concerns of other town boards regarding loss of this site for future municipal purposes and the costs that could be incurred as a result. The Finance Committee therefore recommends no action on Article 12. On Article 13, though in the long run the cost of outsourcing may be built into our education budget if Article 13 fails, the committee feels it unwise to build a depot on the landfill site and recommends no action on Article 13. Regarding Article 14, the committee has weighed a challenging set of considerations. Nevertheless, the Finance Committee recommends a vote of affirmative action on Article 14. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. We will hear next from the Planning Board, the Chair, Elizabeth Eldon. And while she's coming forward, I know that there are some folks here at town meeting tonight who have, perhaps, are not regular attendees. Sort of a hint as to terminology, a recommendation of no action is a recommendation of a negative vote. A recommendation of no position is neither a positive nor a negative, and obviously, a recommendation of affirmative action is a yes vote, just in keeping track, and you can follow along, and perhaps we'll be using your sheet as I am to keep track of who's on second or who's recommending what. Chairperson Elizabeth Eldon of the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elizabeth Eldon, 347 Old Bedford Road, Chair of the Planning Board, speaking on behalf of the Planning Board. Planning Board recommends no action on Article 12 and affirmative action on Article 13. Article 12, maintaining control of the landfill site affords the opportunity to continue its restoration, maintain its open space, and promote its historical significance. A conservation restriction is not required to accomplish these goals. In fact, a CR limits our flexibility to determine how best to improve and manage the site, yet we will continue to be burdened by the responsibilities and costs of its ownership. Planning Board recommends no action on Article 12. Article 13, the most reasonable location for the bus depot is at the old landfill. Setting aside the controversies surrounding how this site was chosen, the Planning Board considers the site to be ideal for several reasons. It is close to the high school. It is at the intersection of two major routes, 2 and 126. It is far from a butters. The site is already in use for similar activities by our Public Works Department, and it is adjacent to yet another similar activity, the Walden Pond Parking Lot. Planning Board recommends affirmative action on Article 13, and the Planning Board did not take a position on Article 14. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eldon. We'll next hear from the Public Works Commission, Commissioner Jim Smith.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Smith, 4 Nathan Pratt Drive, speaking for the Public Works Commission. Beginning with Article 13, the Public Works Commission has voted to take no position on Article 13. While we believe a bus facility in the location proposed is consistent with other landfill activities, we simply do not see this policy issue as being within our purview. Moving to Article 12, the Commission has voted unanimously to recommend that the meeting take no action on Article 12. Concord Public Works and the Public Works Commission are the stewards of this 35-acre landfill parcel. We are responsible for maintaining the site on a daily and long-term basis and for considering how it is best to be used. Over the years, the landfill site has been used for many community purposes. Jeff mentioned some of them on his slide, recycling, composting, log and brush and snow storage, seasonal equipment storage, construction staging, fire department training, and many, many other purposes. Indeed, town residents collectively make about 8,500 trips annually to the landfill site. New or expanded community uses for the site arise from time to time, including the light plant's proposed utility-scale solar array on the site. Just this fall, we've learned that we will need to expand our snow and material storage at the landfill due to the loss of land that we previously had used for this purpose near MCI Concord. This is land that's being transferred to the Concord Housing Development Corporation. Many of these new or expanded uses would be difficult, if not impossible, to place in any other part of town. Indeed, it is the very fact of the landfill's size, its configuration, central location, significant distance from residential neighbors that permits such a wide variety of uses and makes the site irreplaceable. Not all of the current uses could have been envisioned when this site was purchased in 1958. No one could have foreseen a solar array or a composting center or a training site, and we're convinced that no one today can envision all the community uses that may be possible in 2058. Limiting future community uses of the landfill is not in the best interest of the town. Yet, this is what we believe Article 12 will do. We have not been provided with copies of the proposed conservation restriction, this despite numerous requests for that document, but what we do know from the draft purchase and sale agreement is this: Whilst Concord Public Works would be able to retain all current activities of the site, we must do so in substantially the same manner as these activities are presently conducted. That is to say, it is wholly unclear whether expansion of an activity would be allowed, and if so, to what degree. And importantly, no new activities would be permitted on the site. Had this restriction been in place five years ago, there might not be an option for solar array. And depending on the exact wording of the restriction, it's not clear whether and to what extent we could ever expand or modify any of our current activities. For example, could we expand the area for additional snow or material storage? Can we increase the number of training sessions on the site or modify the location of construction staging? Moreover, we have no idea whatsoever what opportunities for future community use will be lost or what cost we would need to acquire other land for such purposes if we do not have full access to this site. In short, we see this property as a valuable and essential town resource over which the town should maintain full control for current and future uses, employing environmentally appropriate technologies. The exclusive control is a far greater value to the town than any one-time payment. We urge the town to maintain full control of this resource and to vote no on Article 12.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. We will next hear from the Natural Resources Commission Chairman Steve Verrell. And we're coming toward the end of the recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stephen Verrell, 415 Plainfield Road, Chairman of Natural Resources. The NRC met earlier this evening to declare a final position on Articles 12, 13, and 14. This decision did not come easily, particularly for Article 12. There were concerns about the amount of money being offered to restrict 35 acres and the narrowness of the proposed uses allowed, which are only the ones presently existing, plus solar. We noted that not so long ago, portions of this land were used, were considered for use as cell towers and recreational fields. And more recently, of course, the opportunity for solar was presented. In the future, there may be other uses that would be compatible with the surrounding area that we haven't even thought of yet. On the other hand, the value of this land as an open space has been recognized for quite some time. The Open Space and Recreation Plan of 2004 noted that it was one of the, the only large parcel of unprotected natural vegetation left in the center of town. One of the town land study committee's recommendations was that the conservation restriction be placed on the land and that be added to the Walden Pond State Reservation. The 2004 Open Space and Recreation Plan and the 2005 Comprehensive Long Range Plan both supported conserving the site. Whoop. I'm going to cut to the chase because I had a lot of good things to say here that-
Thank you.
Jeff said for the most part, and I will say that we met this evening with four members present. We had a split vote of three to one to support Article 12. We had a unanimous opinion to take no action on Article 13, and we took no position on Article 14. Thank you.
Thank you much, very much, Mr. Verrell. We will next hear from the Historical Commission Chair Valerie Kincaid.
The Historical Commission recommends affirmative action on Article 12 and no action on Article 13. The town has an extraordinary gift in the presence of Walden Wood in our community. The Concord Historical Commission strongly feels the need to preserve what natural and historical resources we have. On Article 12, the Historical Commission supports the conservation restriction being proposed. The Commission feels that the conservation restriction will aid in the preservation of the historical integrity of Walden Woods. We hope language will be included in the conservation restriction indicating it will be for the protection of cultural as well as natural resources. On Article 13, the Historical Commission does not support the expenditure. We feel supporting Article 13 would contravene the Commission's position on Article 12. If the language of the article did not include the location of the former town landfill site as the possible bus depot, the Historical Commission might have been able to support this article, but we cannot support it as written in the warrant. The Historical Commission feels very sympathetic for the town's need to locate a new bus depot in town and preferably around the high school. We also recognize the school committee has gone to great effort to study this issue and make recommendations. However, the Historical Commission feels that in order to protect part of what is singularly the most important or one of the most important cultural and natural landmarks in Concord, Walden Woods, we would be remiss in not taking this opportunity to afford the area greater protection. As I said, the Historical Commission recommends affirmative action on Article 12 and no action on Article 13.
Thank you very much. The final recommendation for this section of our presentation tonight is a very short letter received this morning from our State Representative Cory Atkins, who chairs the State Commission on Tourism. Were it not for the annual budget debate that requires my presence at the State House tonight, I would be joining you for the discussion. I want you to know that I strongly support Article 12 on the town meeting warrant, which would place the landfill site into a conservation restriction. Likewise, I strongly oppose Article 13, which would place the school bus depot on the landfill site. I take this position for a variety of reasons. First, I'm troubled by the inevitable traffic problems the new bus depot would create. The prospect of a fleet of 40 buses trying to cross Route Two during traffic hours is problematic. I'm also concerned about the unavoidable effects of the Crosby's Corner construction project on bus scheduling and general traffic. Second, this area is near an international tourist site and state park, which hosts more than 600,000 people each year. Consequently, the potential traffic increase could be detrimental to Concord's tourism industry. It also has the potential to generate overtime costs for drivers and increased fuel needed for the buses. Also, diesel fumes from buses sitting in traffic could cause irreversible environmental damage. Third, over the years, I've watched the citizens of Concord vote millions of dollars at town meeting to purchase open space. This is the first occasion when someone else has offered us millions toward the same endeavor. To convert the land of Henry David Thoreau into a bus depot when we have the opportunity to preserve it would puzzle historians forever. Finally, the issue of the bus depot location would further infuriate residents of towns to the west of Concord, who frequently complain that Concord has more crossings on Route Two than any other town in the area. A great deal of Massachusetts economic development is happening to the west, and traffic projections indicate increases in the number of cars traveling on Route Two. It worries me that the decision of where to place the bus depot has the potential to turn a local issue into a regional problem. Sincerely, Cory Atkins, State Rep., 14th Middlesex District. So, we have made it through portions one to eight of the presentation. We are now going to shift from the overall presentation to a specific focus on 12. With each one of them, we will have first a three-minute recap by the presenters to remind everybody of the key elements. Then, we, in some instances, have an additional short recommendation from a town board, and then there'll be open discussion of the meeting and eventually a vote. So, we have next the recap on Article 12, which we focus on now, and we'll hear from the Walden Woods Project leader Kathy Anderson. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I'm Kathy Anderson. I'm the director of the Walden Woods Project and a former Concord resident. For 23 years, I've had the privilege of working with many of you to protect 140 acres of open space here in town and create innovative environmental programs for Concord students. We gather here on Earth Day with an opportunity to continue Concord stewardship of the natural and historic resources that make this community so unique. Behind me, you're seeing images of the landfill in Goose Pond. Few have seen the 25 acres of the landfill that have high conservation value. The Walden Woods Project donated $130,000 to the town for ecological restoration of the site. The site's enveloped by Walden Pond State Reservation, a national historic landmark, the site of the world's most famous pond. Across Route 2 is the town forest and Brister's Hill Trails. Our objective is to route the base circuit trail through Brister's Hill, build a natural overpass across Route 2 to the landfill and over to Walden Pond. The landfill is the last and largest unprotected area in this open space and a major wildlife corridor. Article 12 follows the recommendations of the town's Open Space and Recreation Plan. It is a win-win for the town. The town will own and manage the landfill site. It will not be purchased by the Walden Woods Project. 20 acres will be used for solar energy generation and public works. 15 acres will be open space with new trails and opportunities for education programs. This site will become a model for balancing multiple uses and restored landfills. Concord has always been on the cutting edge of new ideas. This is no exception. The town will receive $2.8 million, nearly three times the appraised value of the conservation restriction, to fund a variety of town priorities, perhaps including transportation and housing. Most communities use taxpayer dollars to buy open space. Article 12 compensates the town for preserving this land. A large solar array will be constructed, as you have heard, and we are confident the conservation restriction for the landfill will be approved by the state, but it would not be approved with a bus depot. All the activities in the public works area will continue. You'll still be able to go there to recycle, to drop off Christmas trees, to do tree and leaf disposal, to do composting. There are better sustainable alternatives to address the town's bus transportation needs than building a bus depot in Walden Woods. This is not a choice between conservation of an internationally significant site and outsourcing school buses. Concord is a community full of highly intelligent visionary citizens, who I hope will seize this opportunity to preserve Walden for future generations and create a clean, sustainable school transportation system at the high school for Concord students. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Anderson. We will hear next, and we're getting very close to the end of the presentations, from the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Carmen Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carmen Reese, 52 Devon Street, Board of Selectmen and speaking for the board. The Selectmen unanimously recommend affirmative action on Article 12. Article 12 is the culmination of many years of thinking about how best to use a large tract of land that's a significant town asset, balancing a variety of essential town values and goals. Several town studies have considered the former landfill, including the 2004 Open Space Recreation Plan, the 2001 Landfill Study Committee Report, the 2005 Comprehensive Long Range Plan. These studies recognized the value of the site as open space, but also its importance to municipal functions. They recommended permanent conservation of the former landfill, but with the caution to provide for municipal needs in doing so. Some have asked, why place a conservation restriction on the landfill? Why not simply trust ourselves to use it appropriately? First, because in taking this action, we make a commitment to preserve historical and natural resources that we hold valuable, whatever the future pressures may be to compromise or abandon that commitment. Second, because in accepting a payment of $2.8 million for the conservation restriction, we defray the cost of making that commitment and gain resources that we can apply to other priorities. Some have suggested that we state now how we plan to use the $2.8 million, including specifically committing a portion to affordable housing. The town meeting should not make the decision on Article 12 based upon how proceeds would be directed. The proceeds are secondary. They will go to the general fund. The Selectmen will come to future town meetings with recommendations on how to use them, and town meeting will vote. As a town, we do sometimes find our important values and goals to be in tension with each other, and we certainly feel that tension with respect to Article 12. It's no surprise that the Public Works Commission, the Historical Commission, and the Finance Committee have come to differing conclusions on Article 12, or that the Planning Board and the Natural Resources Commission have split votes. Each of those boards has a very specific lens through which it views the question, how best to use the landfill. The Board of Selectmen is charged with looking through all of the lenses and harmonizing the views into a single balanced best overall view. We believe we've done that, and we recommend affirmative action on Article 12. One last note, I want to emphasize that the Selectmen's recommendation for the best use of the former landfill does not mean that we are in favor of outsourcing school transportation. We are not. And we will comment further on that in our statement on Article 13. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reese. The last thing is the recommendation from the Light Board. They said that they did not wish to take up meeting time making a statement. Many of you know that they had voted previously no action on this Article 12. Their fundamental thrust of their responsibility is to ensure maximum solar use at the site. They have, they met again four nights ago and asked me to announce that they have changed their position so that they're no longer a negative vote. They're not taking a position pro or con there, and their expressed rationale for that, which is explained in a handout which is available in a longer statement, is that their concerns about future solar use of the landfill have now been met. So, they've moved from a negative to a neutral, if you will. We have now concluded the presentations of these three important alternatives, and the floor is open for discussion. Microphone number two.
John Stevens, 26 Simon Wheeler Road.
Please proceed, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm chairman of the Concord Land Conservation Trust, stating the land trust's strong support for Article 12. The several town committees who recommended conservation of the landfill, even without a $2.8 million windfall, did so for good reason. The landfill meets the land trust's principal criteria for identifying important conservation sites. It's large, and it's connected to other conservation land. The prior presenters talked about the immediate connections, but I'd like to take just a minute to give you the big picture. To the south, of course, the landfill abuts the Walden Pond State Reservation, but beyond that, it links to the land trust Wright Woods and a network of trails extending all the way to Fairhaven Bay. That was the distant body of water shown in the Selectmen's first slide. To the north, it, across Route 2, it connects not only to Brister's Hill and to the land and to the town forest, but to other townland and the thorough ramble that leads into the center of town. So, all in all, this article and the project for which it provides will create a corridor, a necklace of accessible open land extending from the center of the village all the way to Fairhaven Bay and beyond to the southern border of the town. This corridor represents the achievement of what has been a goal, a dream of land preservation in Concord for more than 50 years. Don't miss this opportunity. And this will be, I would like to stress, a Concord project. When it was raised at an earlier hearing, that Walden Woods, the holder of the restriction, was an organization that, although grounded in Concord, looked beyond our town's borders to the wider world, the land trust was asked if it would serve as a coholder. We didn't seek this position. It's a responsibility. It's going to require the expenditure of resources. But we're willing to undertake that responsibility to expend those resources, because this project has such important benefits for Concord. Please support Article 12. Thank you.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. We have more than a dozen people standing at microphones here in the auditorium, three in the cafeteria, three in the gymnasium, so we're going to take a half dozen here. The people here, I've watched carefully, were up more quickly, so we'll take a group of speakers from here and then go to the cafeteria and the auditorium. Microphone number three. Oh, and let me make one further clarification, because I may have been misleading. We are focusing now, although there are three broad alternatives, obviously. This is a discussion now on Article 12, and I would ask you to direct your attention and all of your remarks to the pros and cons of Article 12. Microphone number three.
This is WIQH Concord.
Here?
Yep, the big three, right in front of your mic, yes.
Okay, sorry.
No, Al, you're at one. Hold on.
Well, I'm at one.
Please, please identify yourself.
It's me, okay. Carol Dwyer, 245 Main Street.
Ms. Dwyer.
I'm speaking about the pressure the school committee is putting on our votes tonight relative to Article 12 and 13, because it really combines the two. I can't talk about one without the other. Sentiments against outsourcing our school buses have grown, and the school administration has been very reluctant to consider locations on the high school property for continuing any of the bus transport services, which have been there for 35 or more years. At last year's town meeting, a Citizens Transportation Committee was formed. Their first choice for siting bus facilities was where they already existed at the high school. But this spring, these buildings were demolished by order of the school committee before we could vote. The Citizens Committee had chosen another site on the high school campus as their second choice, which still represents a, or presents a viable location for the buses. Now, the school committee has stated publicly that if Article 13, to build bus facilities at the retired landfill site, isn't passed, they will outsource the buses. Further, if there is any amendment to Article 13, they will outsource the buses. In other words, what could tip the scales on our votes is the bald threat by the school administration, that if we don't vote the money for putting the bus facilities at the former landfill site, the school administration will outsource the buses to First Student Inc. or another private service. This behavior is not democratic. A municipal lawyer says it may be illegal. So, I hope we can be assured that these threats will not be acted upon by the school administration, and that we can feel free to vote according to our wishes. I'm sorry, I was going to just recommend that you vote for Article 12.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And again, please, especially, let's not waste time having to wait for clapping to calm down. We're going to go to microphone number four here in the auditorium. Please identify yourself.
Right. Thank you. Richard Wheeler, 99 Sudbury Road.
Mr. Wheeler.
I wish to express my enthusiastic support for Article 12, which would provide four important benefits to the town of Concord. First, a significant cash revenue of $2.8 million. Second, preservation of a key parcel of open space that is a town priority. Third, the opportunity to construct a large solar energy installation that furthers the town's renewable energy goals. And fourth, the continuation of our important public works activities that now take place at the former land site. Voters at the 2001 town meeting requested the Selectmen to appoint a committee composed of residents representing diverse interests within the town to evaluate the most appropriate uses of the former landfill site. I was honored to chair the landfill study committee, which issued its report in 2003. Among the committee's conclusions were, one, the landfill is an important asset to the town, especially with regard to the ongoing Concord public works uses. Two, the landfill site would be an important and significant asset to the Walden Pond Reservation. The town should recognize this and give serious consideration to making the landfill site part of the Walden Pond State Reservation at some time. Whether this is accomplished by a title transfer or conservation restriction makes little practical difference. Three, the town should be adequately compensated for the loss of future value of the land. Personally, I believe that Article 12 is consistent with the recommendations of the committee, and I urge your support for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. We'll take one more here in the auditorium before moving the other room. Microphone number two.
Thank you. Louise Haldeman, 384 Hayward Mill Road. Someday, someone may write a novel about the last year or so. I have learned that people say the two things that are certain are death and taxes, but I'll tell you, the other things that are certain is that towns, it will snow, towns will have things that they have to compost, buses have to go. This may ultimately be what we want to do with that landfill, but I urge us not to vote it now. There are too many unanswered questions. I keep hearing, and for full disclosure, I was a member of the CTC, I'm not speaking for them, I keep hearing that there's lots of places to put the buses. I don't think there are. We looked. I assume that town sites that would not be particularly good for buses are not going to be good for composting or snow removal either. We tend to overlook the remarks made from the boards and committees specifically assigned to public works. We should not. I, yes, Walden Pond is lovely, and it would be nice to add that. It functioned as a dump for many years, and it didn't stop people from coming to Walden Pond. I hope we can eventually use, put this into conservation, but Concord has an excellent record of putting things into conservation. That's why there's a lot of land that's not available. We should not do this now. We have too many unanswered questions. Walden Woods will still want this land. Maybe the school committee will come to its senses and find some way to handle the buses. I don't know. But I think if we vote for this, we close off all our options, and I urge us to have some sense and wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to, if I could ask the moderator in the cafeteria to please pick the next two speakers.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Richard Wells, 368 Plauswick Road.
Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, I would suggest that you consider modifying your scheduled presentations slightly and letting us hear the items 13 and 16 on Articles 13 and 14, presumably the con positions from those boards, to complete the board committee recommendations before we vote on 12. Thank you.
Thank you for your suggestion. We have a large number of citizens wanting to speak, and we specifically structured things so that in addition to the overall, when boards wanted to make a presentation overall, some boards only wished to speak to one or two, and I really think it's important, especially for citizens that have waited this long, this evening, to have the opportunity to speak. So, I'd like to continue with that process. Remaining in the cafeteria?
Microphone number two.
Hello? I'm Gloria Clow, 649 Sudbury Road. My husband and I have supported the Walden Woods Project for quite some time, as have many of our friends and neighbors. We have come to know and appreciate the work that this nonprofit organization has done to help Concord achieve a number of its priority open space and historic preservation goals. This organization is part of the fabric of our community, and it's not an outside group. The Walden Woods Project was established 23 years ago and has raised millions of dollars within town and beyond to preserve the natural, cultural, and historic features of Concord that we all value. Here are two examples. One of our oldest farms, the Pine Tree Farm, was saved from commercial development by the Walden Woods, and as a result, continues to be an active agriculture, providing fresh produce for our community. The Walden Woods Project preserved the Brister's Hill property directly across Route 2 from the former Concord landfill and adjacent to the town forest. This site has a significant connection to the history of slavery and its This site has a significant connection to the history of slavery and its aftermath in Concord, and it was a focus of Thoreau's scientific research, research that today is being used by scientists to study climate change. It was to be developed into a large office complex. Fortunately, the Walden Woods Project purchased this site, protected it in perpetuity, and created a beautiful and informative interpretive trail that is enjoyed by many here in town and used for educational purposes by teachers and school groups. The Walden Woods Project has been a great partner for Concord. The latest proposal to provide long-term protection for the site while the town would continue to own and manage the property is a win-win for Concord. I urge you to vote a yes for Article 12. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clow. And now we'll go to moderator Flood in the gymnasium to pick the next, identify the next two speakers.
Bob Andrews, 32 Staffordshire Lane. I'm a member of Concord Can, and I am speaking for Concord Can. Concord Can urges you to vote yes on Article 12. Article 12 will permanently protect the integrity of highly valued, open, and forested space. It will allow us to go forward on solar energy, and it will retain environmentally positive DPW services in a central location. Protecting this land is clearly consistent with long-range planning efforts of the town which have been cited previously. Putting a large bus transportation infrastructure on ideal conservation land is not a good or sustainable plan. So we are very much behind the exclusion of such a facility from the landfill site. Article 13, which we're not discussing, is unnecessarily forcing a choice between sullying the landfill and outsourcing both unsustainable options. We don't see this kind of forced choice as an acceptable basis for decision-making. Resources are scarce, and we've got to work together to identify what we really need and how to meet those needs sustainably. The interim bus system now in place could remain in place while school officials work with others to develop a better and more sustainable long-term plan. This system is costly and highly unsatisfactory from a long-term perspective, but we think it's worth the price to keep it in place for a while to buy time to find solutions with a decision-making process that embraces what is best and most sustainable for all of us. Options that could be very seriously considered are dispersing elements of the bus system among different local sites. Targeting the student parking lot at the high school for one of those sites after the construction dirt that's on it is removed is something very much to be considered. It doesn't seem like those options have had enough consideration before. Vote for Article 12.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. We'll take another speaker in the gymnasium, and I know that there's three in the cafeteria, and there's way more than a dozen here, so one more in the gym.
Justin King, 9 Wright Farm. I would like to call the question.
So the question has been called. We have a trade-off here, as we do with the fundamentals. It's after 10 o'clock. A lot of people have listened patiently for a good while, but there's also a number of people standing, still waiting to speak. So what I would like to do is use the moderator's discretion to hear from one more person from the cafeteria, three more people from here, one, I'm sorry, one more person from the gymnasium, one more from the cafeteria, three from here, and at that point, we will take the motion to close debate, and we'll see the will of the meeting at that time. So one more speaker, please, from the gymnasium.
Hi, Steve Erza, 39 Cottage Street. I fully support and endorse the Walden Woods Project, an organization I have known since its inception in 1990. The Walden Woods Project has already preserved many lands within Walden Woods. The $2.8 million is an extremely generous and substantial sum for the town to use at its discretion. Could be used to acquire land elsewhere in the town for buses or expenses for the high school as well. We can find another site for the buses. We can't replace the land at Walden Woods. Please vote for number 12.
Thank you very much, and thanks for the succinct nature of your remarks. We'll take another speaker now from the cafeteria. Microphone one.
Charles Phillips, 65 Fairhaven Road.
Please proceed.
Chair of the Concord Housing Foundation. The Concord Housing Foundation takes no position on Article 12. However, if Article 12 passes and the conservation easement is established, the Concord Housing Foundation urges the selectmen, other town boards, and the citizens, in the spirit of generosity, to allocate a significant portion of the received funds to affordable housing, in particular through a grant to the Concord Housing Development Corporation, the town's agent, for creating new affordable housing.
Thank you very much. We'll now back here to the auditorium. Microphone number three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll come to number three right after number one, that's correct. Mr. Armenti has been here long, long guest.
Al Armenti, Concord Green. Mr. Moderator?
Please proceed, Mr. Armenti.
I'll be voting no on Article 12. I've been a Concord resident for over 50 years, and I am concerned over the direction our land use policy has taken over the years. We have reached a point where the town has lost control of more than 55% of its residential buildable land. This comes out of the 2005 long-range plan. I think that percentage has grown over the past nine years. Like most of us, I enjoy small-town character of Concord. It's rivers, forests, lakes, and ponds, but the town is losing large pieces of property at an astonishing rate. Over the course of the past 20 years, Walden Woods Project alone has bought or taken control of seven large pieces of land totaling 146 acres. The sale of the landfill under Article 12 would add another 35 acres to the list. This is troubling. Selling the landfill rights would further reduce our ability to determine how we can meet our future needs. We are living at a time of rapid technological advances. Only a short time ago, photovoltaic energy was a dream in the brain of a few nerdy techies. Today, it is a fast-growing industry. My clock at home was wrong.
Thank you very much, Mr. Armenti. Speaker, microphone number three, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is David Stevens. I'm at 104 Philip Farm Road.
Mr. Stevens.
And first of all, I just want to thank everybody, including the presenters and the speakers, for making my decision here so easy. The decision I'm going to make tonight is to say no to 12, no to 13, and yes to 14. And the reasons, simply, it is not about conservation, it's about the selectmen making a deal with Walden Woods to get their, get paid for building a solar panel. Number three for 13, the reason is simply that I don't like having a gun held to my head and saying they're going to do outsourcing regardless of what we do. And number 14, it's a viable and the only viable option before us tonight, and I recommend we vote on board 14, and even though I'm speaking on 12. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Nancy Bukas, 1360 Monument Street. A member of the, thank you, Mr. Moderator. A member of the Board of Directors of the Concord Carlisle League of Women Voters and speaking for the league. The league recommends a no vote on Article 12. A no vote is recommended because the landfill site is the only area of comparable size owned by the town of Concord that is not already dedicated to conservation, farmland, or school use. It is bordered on two sides by state highways, Route 2 and 126. It is not close to any houses, and while abutting the Walden Woods Pond Reservation, it is on the other side of 126, across the street and north of the pond and entrance. At present, it is used by the Town Public Works Department for snow dumping, composting, and equipment storage. It is a site for a future solar array, and there is also sufficient space for our bus depot should the town and the schools come to an agreement. The league believes that relinquishing control of this land without a thorough assessment of the future needs of the town would not be in the best interests of the citizens of Concord at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bukas. So I said that we would defer for a certain number of speakers the motion to conclude debate. We heard initial presentations of 46 minutes. We have now heard citizen comments of 24 minutes. The motion to, and we have eight or nine people standing here, several in the cafeteria and in the gym. The motion to end debate is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds majority to pass to end debate and come to a vote.
Point of order? Yes.
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry. Tanya Galis, 62 Prescott Road. The Board of Selectmen have already given us a teaser that they don't want to outsource buses, but they haven't proposed their idea, and where they suggest we put the buses makes a difference.
I'm sorry, that's, in fact, a substantive comment. That is not a point of order, and so we do need to proceed to the motion which is before us, which is a proposal that we end further discussion and come to an immediate vote on number 12. If we don't end debate, there at least could be that further discussion. As I say, this requires a two-thirds vote. Only those with the lava-colored voting sheets are going to be able to vote, and I think we all need it, so I'm going to ask that this vote be, that people stand for this vote and perhaps stretch for me. So this, this is a vote only on whether to end debate. So all those who are in further, in favor of concluding discussion now and coming to vote on Article 12, please raise your lava voting sheets high.
The majority of the cafeteria and the gym.
And this room as well, the auditorium.
Everybody's pretty much on their feet. Very, I would be surprised if this wasn't unanimous. Everybody's holding their placards high. Moderator is discussing.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. May I ask that everyone please be, remain quiet so we can, now, I would ask all those who wish to continue discussion of number 12, please rise and raise your voting slips.
I would say significantly less people are standing up at this point. Placards are being held up, probably about.
Looks like no one in the gymnasium.
Thank you very much. So we do have a clear, way more than two-thirds vote in each, all three of the rooms, to come to a conclusion of debate. So now, we come to voting on the merits of Article 12. Article 12 is to place a, sell a conservation restriction for $2.8 million on the former landfill site as set forth in the motion that would allow the current public works activities to continue and the solar activities to continue, but a conservation restriction for the future. It would preclude the placement of a school bus facility at the landfill. So this, because it's a real estate-related matter, this similarly requires a two-thirds vote to pass. And to give you a second chance to stretch, I'm going to ask all those who are in favor of Article 12, please stand and raise your voting slips.
All right, much of the auditorium is standing. Mike, what would you say? Do you think that's about two-thirds?
I'm more than two-thirds, in my opinion.
And checking our monitors for the gym and the auditorium.
Oh, it looks like the cafeteria is in mostly a majority.
Okay. Moderator is now discussing with the separate rooms. Again, they are voting on Article 12. They've already voted to end debate. Now we are voting if we would like to pass or.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If you'd please be seated. Now, all those who are opposed to Article 12, please stand and raise your voting slips.
Okay.
That's much closer than I thought originally.
This is going to be a close one, yeah.
And Article 12 is just, once again, the article to sell the Walden Woods Project landfill to the Concord Conservatory.
Right, it would turn it into a conservation restriction, which would essentially bring $2.8 million as a one-time payment over to the town.
Thank you very much. The chair is endowed. It's closed. We do need to have a counted vote. What that means, and we can do it expeditiously because we have trained vote counters, I'd ask first that everyone remain in your seats. Second, please close the doors in all three rooms. I would ask the tellers to please rise. We're going to, the way this works is everyone will rise, the tellers will go row by row, two tellers coordinating votes at each one. So you have to be in a seat. No one, no votes can be counted for people who are standing, so please go to a seat if you would like to have your vote counted.
And now, we have brought out the tellers.
Yes, people are heading to the seats.
Okay, and it would also, I think, be helpful if we could all keep quiet. So I would ask now that all who are in favor, please, so we can make this as swift as possible, it's nearly 10:30, all those who are in favor of passage of Article 12, please stand in place, hold your ballot, ballots visible until the tellers have come by and tallied your vote and indicate that you can sit down.
All right, so we have the vote now on Article 12.
Yes.
We were talking about this earlier, so what exactly does Article 12 involve?
Well, Article 12 is the article to sell the Walden Woods to, to make it a conservation. Basically, it's a $2.8 million donation in order to make the land conservation land.
Right, and it's 35 acres, and essentially, what the deal is with Article 12 is that Article 13, they're planning on building what there?
The new school bus depot.
Right, exactly. So there's been a lot of spirited discussion. Some people say, well, you know, we want to save the land, we want to preserve it, we're really good at that, but then, you know, we've got people that are arguing otherwise.
But then there's also, there's also the dark horse in Article 14, which presents another option where you can put the bus depot as well.
Absolutely, so we were actually just discussing this, how Articles 13 and 14, it's advantageous to go to be Article 12 because now essentially Articles 13 and 14 are kind of moot.
Exactly.
If this passes, of course. So we have the tellers working their way up and down the aisles.
That's a tough job.
Yeah, I'm not sure I would want to be one of them, but they're doing it very quickly, and people are.
Could I ask, please, if Mr. Lee Flight is here, if he would please come forward to assist the tellers? Lee Flight, if you are here, please come forward. Thank you.
There's been a lot, oh, go ahead.
I'll have to.
No, please.
Okay, well, I was just going to say, Article 12 has, as we've said before, has a very large impact in Article 13 and possibly in Article 14 as well.
Right.
Seeing as the, this, if this passes, it would make. Seeing as though this, if this passes, it would make Article 13 obsolete.
Right.
And Article 14, it could sway some voters.
Right, and the thing is, you know, with Article 13, they're saying, "Well, if Article 13 doesn't pass, then we're just going to ship out school bus service."
Yes.
And that seemed to really resonate with people.
Got people quite angry. There were a couple citizens complaining that they're basically stating that the school department, the school board, was threatening them, basically.
Yeah, kind of putting a gun to their head.
Yeah.
Saying like, "Look, if you don't vote for this, then that's literally what one citizen here said."
Exactly, yes.
He was like, "Look, you know, I don't really like you threatening us."
They have -- it's kind of forcing them into a corner, you know?
Right, right. So some citizens certainly were not planned -- or not fans of that. And Article 12, you know, obviously, you've got the conservation side of it, you've also got, you know, where do we put this bus depot? Do we have a bus depot at this point?
Yeah, and all the --
Right.
There's so many different parties to take into account here. It's not an easy decision, though.
No, it's really not, and it's amazing, you know, Article 12 seems to -- or Articles 13 and 14 as well seem to be one of those hot-button issues. You know, we've got the water bottle thing coming up that we've heard is now coming up on Wednesday.
And the CAT.
CAT registration, yep. These are certainly --
A couple of hot topics there. And we had the debate earlier today about just passing the budget for the schools, which was much more complicated than many anticipated.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, they were talking about how normally a town budget and the school budget kind of passes through without too much hassle.
Yeah, but it's surprising.
And there are some people that are kind of, that were calling out the school committee, saying, "Look, you know, you didn't give us all this information in a timely manner. These budget books only came out two weeks ago. You know, what are we supposed to do?"
Didn't give enough time to review the whole thing and come up with a statement to react to it.
Normally, they're supposed to come out, what, ninety days in advance?
Something like that, yes.
Yeah, so it's --
You can even tell here in the auditorium, people are unhappy, not necessarily unhappy, but very opinionated, just judging by the volume.
That's a lot of discussion.
Yeah, there is a lot of discussion.
You can probably hear it behind Mike and I, I mean, there's just lots of discussions. Still, people standing up, waiting to be counted. The doors have been shut. We're shut in here in the auditorium and in the gymnasium.
And very avid discussions going on in the committees. I just saw Diana Rigby was engaging in a very physical gesture with some other board members.
Districulating wildly.
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, so it's certainly, again, I mean, as we were just saying, this is one of our big hot-button issues. This is what people came out tonight for, and actually --
Large turnout, too, as well.
And you have to think about it, how they shut down. We had that resident in a, what was it, the gymnasium, that wanted to call the question that said, "Hey, look, we've been talking about this."
For an hour almost already, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, between the presentations and everything else.
And we still had at least twelve more people in between the whole building, standing up, wanting to speak on this, and it could have gone on for another hour, basically.
And they didn't look too happy that the question was called, to be perfectly honest. So and there's actually, I mean, you can still see them standing at the microphones.
Quite a bit of commotion here, yes.
Yeah, I mean --
Still expecting their turn.
Wondering if they'll actually get it, so it looks like, for the most part, I mean, as far as I can tell, looks like the tellers have finished most of the auditorium. They're still counting --
On the left side over there.
How many rows do you think we have left to go through here?
Looks like four or five at most.
Okay, so, and people are sitting pretty quickly, and I can't really see, I'm a little older than you, so you tell me if you can see over on the monitors how the auditorium and gym are doing.
I can't see that from here, but it looks like --
We need new glasses, apparently.
I do, we do need new glasses. It looks like the, most of the cafeteria has already been tallied, and they are not currently showing the gymnasium.
Okay, so for the most part, the vote is finishing up, and the tellers are submitting their votes. And this, again, just to recap, they're voting yes or no on Article 12, which is the article to sell the old landfill area.
Yes.
That's what it was, correct? The old landfill area to the Walden Woods Commission.
Yeah, the whole, what is it, what did you say? What would you say it is? This, uh?
Well, it's a group, it's a project. And here comes the moderator.
If I could have your attention, please, to further facilitate the vote, we need to ask, apparently, there's a discrepancy, just to ask the folks right here in this front section, is this correct, to rise to be counted again? We're almost completed this as of 9:30. We had nearly a thousand people, a thousand registered voters in the three rooms, so nine-hundred-and-eighty-something, although the count, of course, changes from time to time, so. This is those in favor in this one section where the tellers had a different number. And in just a minute, we'll be asking everyone who are opposed to 12 to vote.
So right now, that one section, he was talking about, who is it that's sitting up there?
Oh, it was the committees, all of the committees.
Right.
And --
Like, the finance committee, the school committee.
It seems, um, not necessarily ironic, but pretty much that the committees are voting along each line, either the whole committee is standing up or they're not. They're pretty, uh, they act as a unit.
Well, what is it? Earlier, they were saying that --
Thank you very much. Now, if everyone could again be seated except for tellers, and all of those who are opposed to Article 12, please stand in place quietly and raise your ballots to be counted.
This seems like a very, very equal number right here. It's going to be very close, I can say.
I'd say it's going to be incredibly close, and we were just saying earlier that the Board of Selectmen all voted really yes on Article 12. But then, you've got the school committee that, you know, who'd they all vote for?
Uh, well, now, they're all standing up right now for voting no to this article.
Right.
So --
So you can tell that each committee, you know, they've got their own agenda.
They vote along their lines, yes.
Exactly.
And they act as a cohesive unit.
Yes, well, which is probably how committees should act.
Yes.
It's probably a good thing. So, yes, so I'm going into our second round of voting here, and the placards held high, the tellers are working very quickly, and it's amazing to see how much support has come out tonight, actually.
Oh, yeah, almost a thousand people.
For Article 12. Yeah, a thousand people in the city of Concord, and I mean, obviously --
It's a good percentage of the whole city, the whole population.
Right, right.
To dedicate one of their nights just to come to the town meeting and vote on some issues.
Yeah, and I've seen people coming in and out, and, you know, it's going to be a bit of an evening, that's for sure.
Oh, yes, it's very, and one of many very exciting evenings to come, especially with the big-ticket item on Wednesday, Article 30 of the drinking water repeal ban, which I've heard is going to be broadcasted on some news station, I forget which one.
Yeah, a lot of --
Is going to be on TV.
And of course, here on WIQH.
Oh, of course, yeah, we'll be here throughout all-town meetings and Carlisle-town meetings.
You on Concord and Carlisle-town meeting, this is the place to come.
Tune into 88.3 WIQH.
Concord. So, no, yeah, definitely Wednesday at 7:30, the repeal of drinking water, if, you know, you remember last year, that was another huge hot-button issue. Everybody wanted to get, you know, get in here and talk about that, so, I mean, just while we're finishing up counting here.
I just have a quick clarification. Do they need a two-thirds vote for this?
Yes, this is, what's going on with this is that they need to have a two-thirds majority, and the moderator was saying earlier, because it involves real estate. You remember that we were talking about some votes need just a majority, some votes need two-thirds. This is going to be a two-thirds, and I mean, do you think --
Same with 13 and 14?
Yes, because it's all requiring, it's all kind of going around the same thing with the Walden Woods. It's all real estate.
Well, the way it seems, the way it seems to be right now, is that, uh, it's more along the lines of fifty-fifty instead of two-thirds.
Yeah, I know, so we're going to have to see what happens. I mean, I don't know about you, but it's looking to be incredibly close to me.
It looks like the finance committee and the school committee are both showing support for voting no for Article 12.
Well, they've actually made their way through most of the tellers, so I'm not so sure what's going on there. There's still, it seems half the finance committee is still waiting to be counted. They finished counting for the school committee. I can't quite tell what committee that is in the corner there, but everybody's --
That was the zoning board, I'm pretty sure.
Zoning board, okay, so it seems like, for the most part, the tellers have worked very quickly.
Oh, yes, they're very efficient.
They're finishing counting the votes, and so, again, Article 12.
Big-ticket item, one of the main topics here on town meeting, 2013 Concord.
So let's go over this really quick. So say Article 12 doesn't pass, what's Article 13 all about?
Well, that opens a whole new can of worms for Article 13, which could lead to the Walden Woods being sold to, what is it, the school committee, who wants to use the, that, two acres of that area?
Right.
As a school depot, a school busing depot.
Right, because we were talking about, you know, the citizen petition of Article 14, because Article 13 is backed by the school committee. Article 14, you'll remember, is the citizen position, or the petition, I should say. So Article 13 would essentially make it so, you know, they want to build the bus depot there, but, you know, if you remember them talking about Article 14, where were they saying that they were going to put the other buses?
Ah, just in the student and faculty parking lot here at the school where it is presently. But that raises a whole new question, where would the new student and faculty parking lot go after the new school is up and the new bus depot theoretically is put over there?
Right, exactly, because, I mean, as it is, parking right here, say they want to build a bus depot sooner than later, parking, I mean, you tell me as a student here at CCHS.
Oh, yeah, well, first of all, I don't drive, but many of my friends do.
But, I mean, you've got friends that do, yeah.
And, yes, it would cause great commotion, and we'd have a very big, if not even bigger issue of where to put the new parking lot, because it would affect so many people, not just the students, but faculty as well. Pretty much everyone in the school would be affected where they need to park in the morning.
Right, and parking right now as it is with the construction. I mean, oh, it looks like a --
You have people parking along near the elementary school, along Laurel Street and up and down, even parking by Emerson Field. It's gotten almost ridiculous where the juniors, people who do not have parking passes find areas to park.
Yeah, and so that, we can already tell that there's a bit of a parking problem here at the school, and Article 14 doesn't exactly say when, you know, this new bus depot, if it was to be put by the school, would be built.
But it seems to be that Article 14 also implies that it is not as black and white as the school committee is attempting to make it out to be.
Right, I mean, they're essentially saying, "Look, we can wait on this for a little while."
Yes.
We don't have, it's not going to be, we don't have to send the bus services out right away.
They're planning to lease the space in Acton and Boxbury for another year at least in the future.
Exactly, so essentially, there are some people standing up here tonight saying, "Well, why do we have to vote on this right now? You've already got a plan in place, and, you know, it's going to be another $400,000 to $500,000 to keep that plan going for the next couple of years, but yet you want to spend all this money on a bus depot that half of us don't necessarily even want."
Want at all. It creates a great division, and it seems to be that it would be beneficial to spend some more time researching other possible locations for this bus depot to go.
Which it seems like a few of the citizens have done, and, you know, there's been a lot of petitions, and, again, we had 12, 13, 14 people that never actually got to speak because of the call to question.
14 is a, by petition by the people. It wasn't brought up by the boards, it was by the people, so the people are doing their research, and it's very helpful.
Absolutely, yeah. So, again, it looks like, for the most part, I don't know about you, Mike, but I think pretty much everybody's been accounted for.
Yeah, we're just finishing up, and I guess we're just waiting to hear the results.
Yep, the moderator is making the phone calls to the auditorium and the gymnasium. Looks like everybody's been wrapped up there.
It's a busy place, for sure.
I would say against this --
Busiest in Concord by far.
Mm-hmm. It's Concord Town Meeting here on 88.3 WIQH Concord. We are waiting on the vote for the nays for Article 12 to sell the landfill to --
To the Walden Woods project.
Exactly.
And just remember, you can turn, tune into 88.3 WIQH Concord for any of your town meeting action, as we'll be hosting tomorrow and Wednesday, possibly Thursday, and don't forget, we'll be there Monday in Carlisle.
Exactly, and you know, actually, it's looking like right here, you know, if this town meeting goes further, it could be scheduled here for Monday and Tuesday as well, I mean --
You never know.
We've got something here on the calendar. If we should lose a day because of snow, the entire schedule, I really don't hope.
I just check the weather, I don't think there's going to be too much snow coming, yep.
You don't think there's any snow, all right, cool. All right, so, look, we won't certainly have to worry about that too much.
And it just seems the last couple of phone calls are being made, and we shall have your results momentarily.
Yep, but, again, it's going to be a tight one.
Oh, yeah.
You should have seen people shoot up out of their seats.
Didn't seem like the two-thirds vote, it seemed more fifty-fifty.
Yeah.
But I got to say, if I had to choose, it seemed that the yes motion was a little more prevalent than the no motion, but it was close in just viewing the situation from where we are in our perspective.
Right, absolutely. I mean, both sides, as I was just saying, they shot up to vote, and, I mean, the tension, again, people are --
It's a very passionate issue right here.
Right, absolutely. I mean, because people seem to really, you know, they, you're either really on the side of conservation.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, and you want to save this part of Walden Woods. I mean, as a Concord Carlisle resident, I'm sure that you are probably conflicted on it.
Honestly, I love Walden Woods. I am a, if I was voting in Concord, if I was a resident of Concord, I would vote for
Article 12.
Article 12, just based on the facts that, um --
But, you know, I mean, the school committee also brings up an interesting point with Article 13. They're saying, oh, here we go. Now, come back to the moderator.
Could the body please come to order? Could the meeting please come back to order? So we have, the tellers have gathered the information in each one of the locations. We've got to get the numbers together and add them up. We want to proceed with the discussion on 13, and we'll announce the results on 12 as soon as we have that. We will have a three-minute presentation by the proponents of 13, the school committee, a three-minute presentation by the selectmen, and then open it to floor discussion. So could I hear, please, from Ms. Spada?
Point of order.
Point of order? I'm sorry? Someplace? Yes, microphone number four, point of order.
Chris McKinney, 293 Haywood Mill Road.
Mr. McKinney.
Just, Mr. Moderator, just before we took the vote on 12, I thought I heard you make a comment that if 12 passed, 13 couldn't, or something like that. And if that's accurate, then we can't proceed until we hear the results of 12. But you did make some statement like that. I don't know if there's a tape you can replay back.
I, if, if 12 passes, i.e. gets two-thirds, only if an awful lot of people change their minds, would we also have passage of 13. But I think that the prudent thing to do is hear these six minutes, be in a position to have further discussion, and to keep making use of the time of everybody that's here. So, Ms. Spada?
All right, so now we're going to start discussion on Article 13.
We are now on the presentation schedule to item number 12, which is taking up -- it's Article 13, but there's a list, 1 through 17, and it's number 12 on the -- oh, boy. Would you please give your undivided attention to Ms. Spada?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm going to go off-script because I want to let the community know that the school committee met just prior to this meeting, and we've heard from citizens about a concern that if the bus depot is built at the town landfill, they would like to hear more about our commitment to keeping transportation in-house. So a motion was made at the school committee meeting, and it passed, so I'd like to read that motion to you. Ms. Gannon moved that the Concord School Committee vote to express its intention to continue in-house operation by the school district of its students' transportation services for so long as reasonably practicable if the school committee's motion under Article 13 is passed, is approved at Concord Town Meeting. That motion was seconded, and it was unanimously approved by the school committee. Second, I'd like to read to you from a letter that was sent from the MSBA, because I think that it best explains the concerns that the school committee has regarding the mass chips and the reimbursement at the high school project. It's a little bit complicated, so I'll ask you to just bear with me. This is a letter that was sent to Ms. Anderson in response to her request from the MSBA for more information about locating a bus depot at the high school property. And I'm not going to read the whole letter, but I'm going to read a couple of parts of it, because I think it's important that you understand our concern. I'm not an attorney, and I'm not a land management expert, but I do think it's important that expert, but I, I do think it's important that you hear, hear a little bit from this letter. The bus depot facility is not part of the MSBA-approved project, and the decision about where to locate the Concord Transportation Department bus facility is an issue that must be resolved locally. Further on, they say, provided the agreed-upon project, including the scope, the budget, and the schedule established in the project funding agreement, and all other terms of that agreement, including the district's receipt of any provisionally-assigned reimbursements, incentive points, are not compromised or altered in any way, the MSBA grant for the project would not be affected by the location of the bus depot. However, the current agreement that we have with the MSBA does not include a bus depot. So putting a bus depot on the campus would be a change to that agreement in, in our read of this letter. That's, that's how we interpret that letter. Further, they say, if the district fails to achieve or maintain eligibility for the provisionally-assigned points for any reason, whether related to the bus facility or not, the grant will be subject to decrease, and the grant amount for which the district is eligible, eligible would be adjusted accordingly. So that's our concern with the high school campus. That's one of our concerns. We are also concerned about the length of time it will take for the, uh, student parking lot to be available to build a bus depot. We consider that a significant expense in our operating budget, uh, over the next four to five years, and that's a conservative estimate. It could take longer. Finally, we feel that it's important that educational land be used for education. So that's a third concern that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now hear from Selectman, uh, Woman Elise Woodward, uh, presentation of the, uh, Selectmen's, uh, recommendation on Article 13, which happens to be number 13 on the list. Ms. Woodward?
Mr. Moderator, thank you. I'm Elise Woodward, 379 Garfield Road, a member of the Board of Selectmen, speaking for the board. The school committee has pursued the feasibility of locating a transportation facility within Concord. The Board of Selectmen appreciates this effort, as well as the collaborative relationship we share with the school committee. Although there are compelling reasons to locate a new transportation facility near Route 2, and the NICH Engineering Feasibility Report concludes that location of a new facility at the former landfill site is technically feasible, the Selectmen recommend no action on Article 13. In our recommendation for affirmative action on Article 12, we explained our consideration of the balance of the town's short and long-term goals for future uses of the former landfill site, taking into account public works activities, solar energy generation, fiscal interests, and the longstanding interest in maintaining the site as open space expressed in the landfill study report of 2001 and the long-range plan of 2005. Article 13 would place a new transportation facility to accommodate the parking and maintenance of diesel-fueled buses on a portion of the landfill site that is directly adjacent to the Walden Pond Reservation, that abuts the 100-foot buffer zone for Goose Neck Pond, and that requires clearing of approximately two wooded acres. Building this facility would meet neither Concord's longstanding open-space priorities, nor Concord's sustainability principles adopted in 2011 of decreasing dependence on fossil fuels and preserving the natural environment. Greening the campus of the high school while compromising the efforts that have been made to restore the landscape of the former landfill does not move us forward on our overall sustainability goals. Our opposition to Article 13 does not mean that the Selectmen support outsourcing our transportation, parking, maintenance, and fueling needs to another town. That also is not a sustainable choice. Rather, we support developing an integrated approach to town and school transportation needs, including investigating the purchase of electric vehicles or those fueled by compressed natural gas to transition to a more sustainable transportation platform that may be accommodated on properties in town that are already developed. This will take some time, and we have the coming three years of the high school construction project to investigate and implement a sustainable transportation system for the future while an interim transportation solution is maintained. The Selectmen unanimously recommend no action on Article 13.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. Uh, the votes have been tallied on 12. Uh, there were 927 votes cast. Two-thirds is required for passage, which is 618. Uh, it did receive a majority, but not a two-thirds majority. The vote was 470 yeses, 457 noes. So Article 12, uh, is not adopted, uh, by town meeting this year. So we will, uh, continue then with the discussion of, uh, 13, and, uh, are you approaching microphone number one? No, okay. The floor is open then for, uh, discussion of, uh, Article 13. Microphone number three.
Paul Horowitz, 173 Haywood Mill Road. Uh, I have a question for the school committee. It seems pretty clear that we've gotten ourselves into a, into a fix here. Uh, and I'm wondering whether we can't somehow, you know, common sense might possibly reign, and we might possibly get ourselves out. We didn't pass a conservation restriction. I think that was a good thing, for the simple reason that it would have tied our hands in the future. And we can always pass a conservation restriction some other time, as Louise Haldeman said earlier. At the same time, it seems to me that I would like to hear from the school committee, that you are open, assuming that 13 doesn't pass, that you are open to an interim solution along the lines of what we just heard from the Selectmen. In other words, I'm worried that you will take an action that will permanently, or relatively permanently, insofar as anything is permanent, uh, outsource those buses, and it will be difficult to return to, to, if we do then later on find a solution, it will be hard to get it back, because we've already contracted out, and the drivers are all elsewhere, and we don't own the buses, and so forth. If you could somehow assure us that you are open, at least, to making an interim solution for the next two, three years, uh, so that we have a chance to get ourselves out of this mess, that would be very helpful in terms of influencing my vote anyway. Thank you.
Ms. Spada has been the spokesperson for the school committee on this. Perhaps you'd be able to respond to Mr. Horowitz's question.
May I ask a clarifying question of...
Sure.
Mr. Horowitz. Mr. Horowitz, I'm assuming that what...
She has a question for your question, please, Mr. Horowitz.
Just a point of clarification. I'm assuming that you're asking that question, if Article 13 fails, is that, is that, okay, I just wanted to be clear. So let me read to you, um, a, a motion that the school committee voted on, um, a couple of weeks ago. But before I do that, I want to say, uh, that the school committee has worked very hard over the last year to investigate many different sites. We've investigated unbundling transportation options, as, as some of it suggested, putting maintenance and fueling at the Kaiser Road facility or the light plant, seeing if that could operationally work with the town, the current town uses, and we found that that was not a feasible option. We've investigated more than 20 properties. We've looked at all the school-owned properties. We've looked at privately-owned properties, and we've looked at a, a whole range of town-owned properties, and I'd be happy to tell you more about those individual properties and why they were eliminated. It's important to think about the use of the land. We think about educational use of land. We think about athletic use of land. We think about, uh, conservation restrictions that are on existing land, and all of those issues were taken into consideration when we evaluated individual properties. There is no perfect solution. We, we did not find a perfect solution. Uh, we tried to find the best solution that we could, and, and that is why we chose the former town landfill. It, many of the restrictions that we found on other properties, such as educational use, agricultural use, do not exist on that property. So that's how we got there. So that's a long-winded answer. I apologize. Um, but I will tell you that after significant time, a, a year dedicated to this, we do not feel that it's appropriate to operate in this interim transportation mode for a long time, because we don't see other options. We, we don't believe that there will be a cleaner, neater solution. We, we just don't. I've, I've looked very hard for a clean, neat solution, and, and we didn't find one. So we, we resolved that if Article 13, um, fails, then the Concord School Committee and the Concord Regional School Committee will proceed with planning to contract private transportation services and outsource. I know, I'm sorry, I'm, I know that's not what you want to hear, but unfortunately, uh, we have looked very hard, and the interim transportation mode is a temporary mode. Our leases will be up. There are three-year leases. We're well into the first year of our, first year of our three-year leases. Uh, when those leases are up, we, we have a responsibility to provide transportation to our students, and, and that is a responsibility that we take very seriously, so.
Thank you very much. We have one in the cafeteria, uh, one in the gym, two in the cafeteria, and nine here. Uh, so we'll take the first group of speakers from here. Microphone number one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charlie Blair, 26 Florio Drive, member of the Finn Combat, speaking for myself.
Mr. Blair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, it's been mentioned a couple of times with two letters that, uh, Ms. Anderson asked to, uh, be sent out, uh, one from the Department of Environmental Protection, and one from the Mass School Business Authority that was just quoted by the speaker. Uh, in there, uh, on the MSBA, uh, letter, um, one of the paragraphs talks about any provisional assigned reimbursement incentive points are not compromised or altered in any way. The MSBA grant for the project will not be affected by the location of the bus depot facility on-site. In the Department of Environmental Protection, which kind of lends itself to, uh, the land, the old landfill on the, uh, on the regional site at present, in the letter, uh, the answer back to Ms. Anderson was that we are not aware, and this is from, excuse me, this is from, uh, Eric Worrell, acting regional director, Northeast Region of the MS, of the Environmental Protection. He said, "We are not aware of any conversation between the Northeast Regional Office of the Mass DEP and the Concord School Administration related to the suitability of the CCRHS site for a school bus depot." Uh, he further states that, uh, the two 16, uh, while it would be legally accurate to say that the regulatory timeframes for cleanups could extend into the two, 2016, 2018 timeframe, one of the main benefits of the semi-private 21E system is to clean, is that cleanup can occur as quickly as reasonable party conducts cleanup actions. They do not need to wait for the Mass DEP approval unless it is an emergency or an immediate response action. Moreover, oftentimes, project proponents can obtain a partial response action outcome in advance of a larger cleanup being completed to facilitate a given element of the development, redevelopment project.
WIQH Concord.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. Uh, microphone...
Point of order.
I'm sorry?
Point of order.
A point of order at microphone number one. Identify yourself, please.
Herbert Newman, 238 Nerznack Hill Road, Concord.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, uh, put a, uh, to, to this particular thing that if 13 fails, the school committee is not authorized to, uh, have school busing outsourced.
Uh, I'm sorry, that's a, that is not a point of order, sir. That's a, uh, an argument or a amendment to a motion.
Okay, can I, can I, can I put it as part?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, because a, a point of order jumps the line for everybody else. So you can stand and be called on at an appropriate time, but these other people and people in the other rooms were all standing at microphones before you, so I next call upon, uh, the speaker at microphone number two.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Yes.
And we now have someone, uh, going up to take the main mic.
Do you identify yourself, please, sir?
Phil Benincasa, 108 Comerford Road, member of the school committee, speaking specifically for myself. I'd appreciate it if you would keep that in mind. I asked to come up here because at my age, it's nice to hold on to something, you know? So, I have been opposed to outsourcing, uh, from the very moment that I heard about it, uh, just prior to my election to the school committee. Uh, I suspect that I'm the only person in this room who has been the principal of six elementary schools in six different districts. Uh, I know specifically that there is no comparison between an in-house transportation program and outsourcing. When you have the young mother of a five-year-old on the phone because their child did not get off the bus at the appropriate time, you want to be able to act just as quickly as you possibly can. All of my experience, all of my 40 years in school administration, has taught me that it happens most directly when we are in control of the transportation system, when we supervise the, uh, our drivers, when they're well-trained, when they're well enough informed about a youngster, that they'll come into a meeting and sit down with parents and psychologists and principals and talk about a youngster's well-being as they see it on the bus. Then we've got an integrated program. I want nothing more than to keep this program in-house. It is in everyone's best interest. Don't underestimate that. I'm not going to turn my back on that. Frankly, whatever the vote. But I wish you would consider the landfill as the, the reasonable solution to the problem we face. As soon as I heard about this, I drove all over town looking for places to, that we might be able to house those buses. In fact, there's a rumor going around that I drove a bus to Concord Autobody and tried to squeeze it into, to see if it would work in there. That's not true. I did look at Concord Autobody. Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you, please, to support 13. There are important, very important issues that this school committee has got to wrestle with in the months and years ahead. Really, really important issues. And it's going to be almost impossible for us to do that, uh, unless we get past this particular problem. So please support 13.
Thank you, Mr. Benincasa. Point of order. Uh, please come to a microphone and identify yourself.
Thank you, Garrett Whitney, 299 Strawberry Hill Road.
Yes, sir.
I see speeches being made in support where no speeches are scheduled from the podium. I don't understand that, and I saw the answer to a question from this gentleman, uh, by, uh, I forget her last name, Maureen, that went on for several minutes in campaign speech style. My point of order is I'd like us to tighten up our rules here. I don't understand the podium. I don't understand the speeches. We're, we're making comments from the floor. Is that correct?
We're having discussion of voters.
Correct.
Uh, in the particular instance of, and, and most voters speak, uh, from the floor. There are circumstances under which, uh, voters speak from, from the podium. Um, I chose in the, uh, instance of a member of the school committee, uh, who began his remarks by, uh, referring himself to his seniority, uh, not to tell him that, uh, he should move to, uh, to another location. I, it is my observation, I have never, uh, observed a vote in Concord Town Meeting to be swayed dramatically, uh, by whether the speaker happened to be standing in one room or in another room at a podium or not. It's been the power of the, of the ideas, but...
I won't debate, but...
I think, I think the point, yeah. Uh, we're going to go to microphone number three, and then, uh, microphone four, uh, in this room. So microphone number three.
This is WIQH Concord.
Uh, yes, I'm Catherine Clermont, 26 Hemlock Street. Um...
Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, I basically wanted to say that I, I believe that the school committee is being disingenuine in their position. Um, first of all, many other committees disagree with there's no other option other than Article 13. Uh, along with that, they've completely closed off other possibilities, including the possibility of going back to the high school, which they themselves have admitted is a viable option, just an option they're not wanting to pursue. And I think that the sentiment here is that people want in-house, yet we're truly stuck between either 13 or nothing. And I would appreciate that the school committee would at least be genuine enough to at least consider the options that still exist, instead of closing them off prematurely as they have done. And I would appreciate the school committee respond to this, because responsible boards have said that they agree that other options do exist, and I'm sure they've read their reports and discussed, had many discussions with them, and I think that that is a statement in, in and of itself, that there are other possibilities, including the Board of Selectmen's position on this.
Thank you. We're going to hear from, uh, from other speakers. It's, uh, I think, not helpful, uh, to think that it's appropriate to characterize a position as disingenuous because you don't agree with it. Reasonable people can and very often do disagree. On 12 and 13, we have a unanimous vote from the Board of Selectmen in one direction, unanimous vote from the school committee, uh, in the other direction. Uh, I think we will all have to see how this plays out once the votes are done. Uh, we'll go to microphone, uh, number four. Please identify yourself.
Good evening, Lisa Bergen, 325 College Road.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I heard earlier, uh, by Mr. Rasmussen, a comment, I think along the lines that, uh, and I should say, I'm the former chair of the Citizens Transportation Committee, the CTC, and a comment was made that the CTC was told to withdraw their support of keeping transportation on the high school property, and that is simply untrue. If you read the CTC report and look at the CTC presentation, you will see that we, at that time, and probably now, would say, all things being equal, keeping something where it is is the most cost-effective socially responsible action. However, that wasn't an option. It wasn't an option because the high school was going in. It wasn't an option because the school committee had voted. So the CTC in their presentation in October said, recognizing that the school committee voted, we feel the next best choice is the town landfill. That is the statement that we made, and that is the statement in talking with the CTC members here tonight that we continue to stand by. I would also ask, moving away a little bit from the CTC, when we talk about transportation and buses, please remember, we are not talking about buses. We are talking about the children in this town. We are talking about transporting them. As Mr. Benincasa said, this is something that is so key to us in our relationship with our entire community. So I, I am concerned that we're talking about where to put buses when we need to talk about what we are using those buses for, and what is the most socially responsible action for us to take in that context. And finally, I hear a lot of statements, we can find someplace else. Having chaired the CTC, having sat on TAC, we looked at everything we could look at that was available at the time. If there is another piece of land, please stand up and tell us, because we, we put hours, hundreds and thousands of hours into this, and we didn't find it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have, uh, microphone number two in this room, and microphone one, then we will go to, uh, the gym... Then we will go to the gymnasium and then to the cafeteria. Microphone number two.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Bugas, 1360 Monmouth Street, again speaking for the League of Women Voters.
Please proceed.
The League has taken no position on this article. However, the majority of the League board believes that using the landfill site for the bus depot would be far preferable to outsourcing. We have not yet heard a definitive proposal from the school committee as to how they would use the site and whether they would agree to continue to run their own bus service for at least an agreed-upon length of time. We do not know what the agreement between the Selectmen and the school committee might include. Without an agreement satisfactory to both the town and the school, we cannot recommend either way. And I must say, this has been a real Sophie's Choice between these two articles. But we have no recommendation for Article 13.
Thank you very much. The gentleman at microphone number one in the front.
Joe Wheeler, 129 Westford Road.
Please proceed.
I...I am disappointed that we didn't get a two-thirds vote on the previous motion. But I would be very happy if we do not get a two-thirds vote in favor of 13. It seems to me that it would be a travesty to put the school bus operation in this conservation area, an area which we have long...for a long time designated as preferably kept for conservation purposes. So the real choice here is between, on the one hand, doing that or the status quo. And I like the status quo pretty well. That is, we don't do non-conservation kinds of activities on that...on the site up near Goose Pond and the state reservation. I hope that we will both know. I'm very encouraged to hear the words of the Board of Selectmen because it seems to me that if I could perhaps stretch what they said just a little bit, they have offered their willingness to work with the school committee to find a solution to this problem. And I think that the school committee should be open to that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll go now to the gymnasium, the woman in the red sweater in the front at the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Dee Ortner, 169 Thoreau Street.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, you mentioned that the motion for the slide...on the slide for Article 13 was incorrect. And to avoid further confusion or to avoid any confusion on this article, I would like to ask that a slide be made and shown that reflects the exact wording on this article. Thank you.
You're welcome. I think that that can be done very quickly while we continue with the discussion. And you can use the information in the handout was correct. Then please to the cafeteria.
Microphone number one.
Okay. Cherry Corey, 277 Old Bedford Road. I, just for a minute, want to speak to the more intimate and specific character of where we're talking about for the bus depot. All night, we've been speaking about the landfill and the Walden Pond Reservation, but the very specific site where these buses would go are on a wooded hill or wooded edge and high point in what is currently the former landfill overlooking Goose Pond. A good portion of the trees that stand on this entire area, there is not a lot of wooded area in the former landfill, but most of it's on the east side, and about half of those trees would be taken out for the buses. What's most important, to my mind, to think about is where we choose to do the things we do in town in terms of the land and its history and what it can continue to give us. And the place where the depot would go is precisely the woods, precisely the part of the woods and the position above Goose Pond that Emerson called his Oracular Woods. It is the place that he walked with Thoreau and Hosmer and Channing and others from what we now call Crosby's Corner to Walden Pond, and it's where he got his first inspiration to write his books. The old Hosmer Cart Path runs right through what would become the bus depot. And the most quiet, intimate, wildlife-rich area of the entire Walden Pond Reservation was well-known as Goose Pond and Little Goose Pond, which is now underneath the landfill. The landfill used to be called the Ripple Lakes District. And if we thought of it that way and thought of the intimacy of that place, and if you visit it and walk that area where the bus depot will go, you will see how we will fundamentally and permanently change one of the most beautiful corners of Concord that we don't recognize anymore because we call it the landfill. For only 40 years in our history, it was a dump.
Thank you very much.
Microphone two.
We're going to go.
Two in the cafeteria.
Okay. Mark Hanson, 340 Holdenwood Road, Concord. I'd like to address my comments briefly concerning Mr. Benincasa's comment about the value of outsourcing. When we...our committee, the Citizens Transportation Committee, of which I was a member and I'm speaking now as an individual, when we made our report on costs versus the Transportation Advisory Committee report on costs at the end of the year last year, there was a divergence in the disparity in the costs. Subsequent to that, Rick Anderson and I got together with Maureen Spata, Jim Flaherty, Matt Wells, and other members of the Transportation Department to resolve that disparity. And we did. We reviewed...we interviewed drivers and mechanics and reviewed transactions from the school's accounting system, et cetera. There's a handout that we've provided at this meeting. I hope you have a copy. It's entitled "Comparison: In-House Versus Outsourced Bussing." Outsourced busing. I'll tell you a few of the key findings from that. First of all, we found that our outsourced system...our in-house system...I'll get this backwards. That would be bad. Our in-house system is saving us...has been saving us $237,888, sorry, $200,000...$237,888, give or take some, per year when it was operating out of the high school. We also found by doing root analysis and by studying the drivers' time recordings for a week before and after the move to Acton that bus outs...moving our buses to Acton has cost...and maintenance to Borica has cost us about $440,000 a year against that $200, roughly $40,000 saving. And we also found that if we can move our buses back to Concord, we will save about $330,000 of that. You can see this all in the write-up that's...the handout. One point that's been made here is about conservation. If we can move the buses back from Acton, we save over 100,000 miles and roughly 17,000 gallons of oil per year.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to microphone four and then microphone two here in the auditorium.
Ramon Cancio, 36 Bristol Hill Road.
Please proceed.
Thank you. There's a lot of emotions running high from...and one of my concerns is with the children. Others have spoken very eloquently about that. So when trying to find a place for a bus depot, all it takes is money. I'm sure there's land in many locations. It just costs a lot of money. Delaying the decision will just cost money, $440,000 perhaps per year. We have the opportunity to make a decision here, finish the discussion, solve the bus problem, get the bus depot set at a site that's available. Unfortunately, there are some conservation aspects that may be lost. We can work with the school committee to mitigate those...the impact. I'm sure of it. The school committee has demonstrated in many instances through difficult times to be flexible and understanding. And what I would...besides gaining the respect that I deserve as a speaker, I would ask that people approve Article 13 so that we can move quickly and save significant amounts of money for the town of Concord. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we could hear microphone number two.
Tom Rarick, 315 College Road.
Mr. Rarick.
There were two parts of the school committee's statement on Article 13. One was they cited that they didn't know whether MSBCA would change their funding of the project if we were to put buses on the property. They said...the only thing that MSBCA said that there was no change in their funding if there was no change in the plan. They said absolutely nothing about whether change in the plan would affect the funding. The statement was made that there was a great deal of a decision that went into the position of the school committee not to consider the current site. And reading from the Transportation Advisory Committee, the committee that was appointed by the school committee, the reason that they excluded the Concord Public Schools...I'm sorry, why they excluded the Concord Carlisle High School property was because of a vote from the school committee. They cited the vote in Attachment 4A, which said, "The reason we're doing this is to reduce the amount of impermeable surface." And they were concerned about it being a water conservation district. They said absolutely nothing about whether they looked into any ways to mitigate either of these...those issues. I do not consider that significant and in-depth discussion of the issue and a reason to avoid voting for the next article rather than this article. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Microphone number three.
Thank you.
And then we'll go to the gym.
I was real surprised earlier by a number...
Could you please identify yourself?
Sorry, Lisa McKinney, 293 Haywood Mill Road. I was a little bit surprised earlier to hear that the school committee acknowledged that they had their responsibility to provide transportation because what's stunning is that in the entire building committee plans, that those got by the town and by the school committee who had oversight on that project with no plans for transportation. And that we come here 18 months later, and they're concerned about transportation because it is their responsibility. And I think the responsibility to fix the problem ought to go back to the school committee who should be called upon by every committee and citizen of this town to fix the problem they created by not allowing for it in their plans, by not applying for their permits when they had the opportunity to do so, and by being well-aware of it when they could have applied for those permits and not destroyed the buildings we're already paying on. I would encourage people to vote positively on Articles 13 and Articles 14 for two reasons. While we might unanimously vote to send a powerful message on Article 14 that we want to have the transportation restored to the high school, we can't force the school committee to put it back there. That is uniquely, at least as it stands now, absent a recall bylaw, absent an act of God, their decision to place the transportation where they would have it. However, in good faith, when we voted on the high school, and this was brought, Jerry Regg responded to a question by Connie when she said, "What about transportation?" And he said, "I assure you, we're looking at all your options, and it's going to be cost-neutral." And we find almost 18 months later, it's not cost-neutral. We're losing out on a conservation restriction. It's going to cost us money to rebuild. It's cost us money for what we took down. And they still haven't said that they will work with the community by either waiting, as was suggested by the Board of Selectmen, or by not rushing to outsource, which holds us all somewhat hostage and pickles us in the exercise of our form of government, which is town meeting and which does allow us the opportunity to have a say in how our tax dollars go. I would also indicate that all the cards should have been on the table. Please vote positively for 14 and 13.
Thank you very much. We have another half dozen people standing here in the auditorium, but there's a person standing in the gym that's been waiting even longer. So we'll go to the gym.
Lindsey Smith Kafka, 39 Hildreth Lane.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I've composed what I was going to say about 20 times in my head while I was standing here, but I basically...I grew up in Concord. I rode the buses. My children have ridden the buses. I do not support outsourcing, but I keep having the lyrics from the Joni Mitchell song going through my head. "Paved paradise, you've paved paradise to put up a parking lot." I think we need to think long and hard about the vote on this article and what that land resource means. I used to take trips to the dump with my dad when I was growing up here, and the reclamation that's happened there is amazing. And we need to, I think, continue to make sure that that hard work over the last 20 years is not wasted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for reformulating all that time. You did it quick, very briskly. We'll go to microphone four and then two.
Susan Callid, 100 Elsinore Street.
I'm sorry?
Susan Callid, 100 Elsinore Street.
Please proceed.
It's very clear from town meeting last year and even tonight that the overwhelming majority of all Concord citizens want to keep busing in-house. And it's a shame that we've been backed into a corner by what's happened with the building plans with the high school and the actions of the school committee. And we don't want to be backed into any more corners. So because I have school-aged children, I plan to vote for 13 because I know what the options are with outsourcing, how they're not safe, how they're not cost-effective. And we're going to be paying if we outsource for many years with the increased costs, not only with the school budgets to pay for it, but also the fees that every parent will have to pay like every other town around us does. So I have a question, however, for the school committee. If I vote for 13, I've already lost a lot of money with the transportation building being torn down, increase my taxes to support the high school. I want to be sure that if I vote to spend more money to build Depot on landfill site, that it is not going to be turned over in a few years to a private company to have a very nice bus depot for students and mothers. So I really need some reassurance that there is no plans to outsource, and as long as this administration, these school committee members sit at this table, that it is going to be for an in-house bus service. Could you speak to that?
I would like to call...there's been a variety of different questions asked of the school committee and provide two minutes for Ms. Bada to respond to those, and then we'll go to microphone two.
I'd like to first respond to Ms. Callid's concerns, and that is the reason the school committee took up the motion that we took up before this meeting. We heard that from citizens very recently. So the motion states that if Article 13 passes, we...it expresses our intention to continue in-house operation by the District of Student Transportation Services for so long as reasonably practical. That is...
Please, order in the House. Okay. Let's go to microphone two and hear from additional citizens.
Valerie Tratnick, 43 Hill Street. Partly in answer to that thought, I...at a recent school committee meeting, I did ask that question to the school committee, and I really pressed them. I said, "Please make some sort of promise or commitment that you will keep busing in-house if we go ahead with Article 13." And they would not make a commitment. And the statement here that Ms. Bada has just read is not a commitment to keeping our busing in-house. They could say, "We promise you, we will keep it in-house for a year. We promise you, we'll keep it in-house for three years." But they have not said that, and they will not say that. So if you vote for this article, you have to understand, in six months, they may be outsourcing. There is no guarantee of that, that it won't be that way. I just want to quickly speak to other things. There is no proven...there is only one proven reason why the bus lock can't go back at CCHS, and that is because the school committee has voted against it. All the other reasons in their presentation about why the school bus lock cannot go back at the at the high school property have been debunked. There are letters of various sorts, I can share them with anyone who wants to see them. In speaking to the letter that Ms. Spada read out loud from the MSBA and somebody else mentioned, this is an important sentence. Because the bus depot, oh God, I don't have my reading glasses. Because the bus depot facility is not part of the MSBA-approved project, the MSBA does not expect the bus depot facility to be part of the CHIPS review. But depending on the location of the bus depot facility and its proximity and/or relationship to the project, CHIPS may decide to include the bus depot facility in its review of the project. The fact is, the school committee has never given the MSBA a proposal.
Thank you very much. We're going to go to the cafeteria to microphone number one.
Sue Felsham, 19 Sunnyside Lane.
Please proceed.
As an environmentalist, I'm voting for Article 13, and I hope other people will as well. Mr. Hanson and Mr. Anderson and other people on the CTC did careful calculations, or formerly on the CCC, did careful calculations of the environmental impact of driving our buses from a distant place. They calculated that it would take 100 years for two acres of trees to sequester the carbon from just one year of driving our buses back and forth from Acton. That doesn't include the additional costs of oil dripping from buses, of wearing our buses out more quickly, having to buy more buses, build more buses, at an enormous cost of embodied energy. Even if the school committee were to build the depot and then outsource but still park the buses at Walden, at the former landfill next to Walden Woods, it would still be better for our environment. I don't like the position that the school committee has put us in, but we have to move forward from the position we are in now. We can't keep the buses on the high school at the moment. That bus has left the station, and so has our depot. So please, if you love our environment and if you care about showing the world our responsibility, that we take responsibility for our environmental impact, please vote yes on Article 13.
Microphone number four in the auditorium.
I'm Alice Kaufman, 1615 Lowell Road. I'm on the Zoning Board of Appeals but speaking as a private citizen. There has been considerable opinion and spirited debate offered on Articles 12 and 13. I offer a slightly different perspective for consider, for consideration. We're being asked to weigh a short-term solution, what to do with our school buses, against a long-term benefit, the preservation of open space. It's unfortunate that these articles come to us tonight as the only choices for solving the bus dilemma. Albert Einstein advised, "We can't solve problems by using the same kind of thinking we used when we created them." But this is exactly what we're being, we're doing tonight. Article 13 compels us to invest in providing transportation for our schoolchildren in the way that we've been doing for decades. Once we make a $2.2 million investment, Concord is committing to 36 big yellow school buses as our only option for transporting our children to school. I can imagine an alternative future. Communities in Kentucky, Pennsylvania, Iowa, Washington, Texas, California, New York, Connecticut, and others are using different models for school transportation that include hybrid electric buses, bike lanes, supervised walking routes with a wider perimeter around the school to get kids to school. With fewer kids riding buses, we may need fewer buses. Perhaps electric, all-electric vans or mini-buses would suffice. When there's an economic imperative, business responds. UPS, the largest logistics company in the world, uses advanced GPS analytics to better plan deliveries and routes, and with the right turn-only strategy saves 3 million gallons of fuel and 28 million miles traveled. We should use the sustainability principles that Concord endorsed just a few years ago to help us guide our decisions. Can we make a decision tonight that does not compromise the social, economic, or environmental future for our children? I urge you to vote no on Article 13.
Thank you. We'll go to the gymnasium. Microphone number one.
Justin King, 9 Wright Farm.
Mr. King.
I just wanted to report that people, people are starting to leave. We have elderly people here, people with children, people who have to work at 6 o'clock in the morning. I think if we have a close vote, it's going to be, have to be counted. We have another measure to, to assess. So I'm going to ask that we call the question, and I'm going to ask that you let the eight or 900 of us, I think the vast majority of people have made up their mind already, the eight or 900 of us decide whether or not we're, want to have continued debate. I respectfully ask that. Thank you.
Well, I, I regret to say that I have to rule calling the question out of order when you've made a statement. If, if a person wishes to call the question, this is very, very clear. A person cannot make a statement and then move the question. And I'm sorry, we, it is very late, and we've been discussing it a good while, but I have to rule that out of order. It's pretty clear. Microphone number three.
Kim Novick, 53 Temple Road. I call the question.
This is not debatable? It takes a two-thirds majority? I, is there a second? Yes. I suspected there might be. So it takes a two-thirds majority. All those who are in favor of concluding debate and coming to a vote, please raise your colored voting slips. Thank you very much. All of those who would like to continue discussion, please raise yours. I can see from the monitors in the other rooms as well as this, that it's an overwhelming sentiment, near unanimous in most rooms, that we come to an immediate vote. So we are now voting on Article number 13. Have we been able to, okay, the, shown on the screen is the correct language. And I'll ask you to take a moment, a pause to read it. The essence of it is, of course, to spend $950,000 to construct and equip a bus facility on the site of the former landfill in a specific location, 2.5 acres that have, that have been identified. So all those who are in favor, and again, this requires, as did the previous vote, it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. So all of those who are in favor of Article 13, please signify by ra, stand, give you a chance to stretch. Stand and raise your colored voting ballots. Please remain standing for a minute.
Okay, so we have a vote right now on Article 13, and-
It's going to be a close one, that's for sure.
Yeah, another one of our close ones here.
We've had a couple of close votes tonight, that's for sure.
All related.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. All those who are opposed to Article 13, please rise.
All right, maybe not as close as we thought this was going to be.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
Yep. Oh. Take that back.
The majority of the auditorium is standing.
You can really underestimate how many people are in the room.
Yeah, definitely. And it looks like the majority in the-
Gymnasium as well.
Gymnasium, and the cafeteria. This is actually going, I have a feeling like this one's going down.
Interestingly enough.
So Article 12, which requires a two-thirds, I'm sorry, 13? Article, I think my eyes are getting blurry at this hour. Article 13, which requires a two-thirds majority for passage, has failed to receive a simple majority in any of the three rooms, so it clearly fails to receive the, the two-thirds majority. It is, the vote fails, and I do so declare. We have on the floor before us, and I appreciate the hour, a motion made and seconded on Article 14. Perhaps since so much has been said, the discussion may be more able to be abbreviated. But we will first hear three minutes each from Neil Rasmussen in favor of 14 and Maureen Spada in opposition to 14.
Point of order, sir.
Point of order.
On the other two-
Please identify yourself, Mr. Banfield.
Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace.
Yes, sir.
On the other two articles this evening, there was a three-minute recap provided to the proponents.
Correct.
But there was no rebuttal recap provided in a scheduled mode for others who are opposed. So I don't know why you've, why you've created this extra recap. I'm, I'm questioning the procedure that you have in place.
The three-minute recap of the proponents is about to be presented by Mr. Rasmussen. We have had throughout recommendations of town boards, and some of those recommendations were of all three, and other recommendations are only on a given, a given one. You might note that the school committee, for example, did not present on 12, but is, has been given the, granted the three minutes to present on 13. Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. School buses have been kept at the high school for 35 years with no problem. It's been said there are technical reasons why the buses can't be at the high school. Most of these problems go away when we separate the permitting, scheduling, and budget from the high school project. There are sites on the high school property that do meet the technical requirements of impervious servants. Ms. Spada even said that in her presentation. The project can be constructed to meet the groundwater conservancy bylaws. The CCHS campus is 95 acres, and the new school will be much smaller in footprint than the old school. A, a great deal of new parking will be created. We don't have to, we don't have a long-term space problem at the campus. We do have a very serious temporary parking space problem during construction. We already have a multi-year off-site storage contract for buses that covers some of that time, but it is expensive. We need to look at creative ways to get the buses back on campus to reduce our expenses. As just one example, we could place a temporary hard-packed stone surface on available flat area for parking and scrape it off at the end of the project. Alternatively, if we just asked some of the students to take the bus for a few years instead of driving their own cars, we would free up most of the parking we need for the buses, save on emissions, and save hundreds of thousands in dollars on off-site storage. We can find ways to park the buses at the school before the building project is complete. We can consider maintenance and fueling facilities as separate projects and take our time to make sure we choose the best green solutions, such as natural gas buses for the long term. We can position and screen the bus depot to be sensitive to Bristol's Hill neighbors. We can still have a green campus if we make a green bus depot. Earlier, there was some question as to the accuracy of my description of the report of the CTC, and I just wanted to clarify, this is the report. It does call out in order, first, the existing site that was at the school that was demolished, and naturally, that was no longer an option, as we explained earlier. The second choice in their list was the CCHS student parking lot, one of the sites that's been discussed tonight. And their third choice was the landfill. They eliminated the second choice when the school committee told them it was not acceptable. The school committee was naturally very concerned when their original decision to outsource busing was overturned. They were afraid it would cause major setbacks, and reasonably afraid, that it would cause major setbacks to the project. But they acted too hastily based on some incorrect information when they dismissed the high school site for buses. Any bus parking depot project we undertake must be separate from the current high school project so it does not place the schedule or funding of that project at risk. There's nothing stopping us from starting such a project.
Thank you very much. Please, let's keep moving. It's very late. We will now hear a three-minute presentation from Maureen Spada on behalf of the school And thereafter, we will be open for discussion from the floor.
The school committee intends to build a, a new CCH campus that is MasCHIPS compliant and a green school. We have concerns about whether adding a bus depot to the high school campus would keep us in compliance with MasCHIPS, and we feel that it's important that you understand that concern and weigh that balance in taking your vote tonight. It's unknown if we could beat the anti-idling policy when the buses warm up in the morning on cold days. This campus is in the groundwater conservancy district. We would need to go through the permitting process again in order to place a bus depot on that campus. It is not in the plan for the high school campus. The student parking lot is the best site for a bus depot. That would not increase the impervious surface. Putting a bus depot there would not increase the impervious surface, but Turner has planned the use of that for logistics, scheduling, and budget. If Turner changes their plan, that would add to the construction cost of the high school project. We estimate that that would cost between $1.4 and $2.1 million, and it would keep us in this interim transportation mode for four to five years. We have leases for three years, and we're well into our first year. It's very important to us that we provide reliable transportation to our students. We are very concerned that our interim transportation mode does not provide a permanent and reliable solution for getting students to school on time. This would need to pass in both towns, both Concord and Carlisle, and Carlisle has made it very clear, this is not of interest to them. They are not interested in putting a bus depot on the high school campus. We have great concerns about it passing in both towns, and the complexities that would be involved in making that happen. The school committee has voted no action unanimously on Article 13, and we ask for your support. Thank you. 14, sorry.
Microphone number four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kim Novick, 53 Temple Road, Concord, Mass. You know how much I love Rand Paul, but I will not go on forever. Lisa over here already used the word hostage, and Alice already suggested that we use, I think it was UPS, to deliver our students. I just want to remind you that the school committee is holding you while hostage. It's a very emotional issue. I suggest we call their bluff. Hold their feet to the fire. 14 is a non-binding article. Call their bluff. How badly do you want this? Are you willing to chain yourselves to the school buses? I'm serious. Think Tiananmen Square. Think Lasts Noce. These things can be done. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one, and then microphone number two.
Abraham Fisher, 400 Hayward Mill Road. I served on the CTC, but I'm speaking for myself. First place, Mr. Rasmussen, I wrote most of this report and edited what I didn't write. And I'm having a lot of trouble finding where you say that we said, "Oh, well, the school committee said we can't do it, therefore, we're going to just back off." What we did say, and what I think is a reasonable statement, is we need to make recommendations based on the world that we live in. We don't make the environment in which we're making these recommendations, and the school committee has some control over that environment. So saying that somehow we backed off because we were asked to is insulting. Second place, I agree with the idea that we're being held hostage, but what we're really being held hostage by is Carlisle. It's amazing how the truth is sometimes funny, isn't it? We have a legal responsibility to get those kids to school. We have a legal responsibility to provide transportation for those kids, whether they use it or not. So saying, "Well, maybe if the kids are driving to school so much, we don't need so many buses," that doesn't work because there has to be a seat on the bus whether or not the kid is in it. We need to find a place to park those buses, whether it's in Concord or out of Concord. All of those things are going to remain true regardless of how we vote on this article. Let's try to keep our eye on the ball and send the school committee a message that they've made a decision we don't like, and this is the answer we think is appropriate to it.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Ramon Cancio, Bristol's Hill Road.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, you know, we're in a situation here where we have to pick between choices that are perhaps neither of them are really that good. As one of the neighbors of the high school, in fact, the closest to the high school in the student parking lot, it, it is a little bit disturbing to see that old Area H circled as opposed to perhaps on the other side where the lower gym entrance is, or some other place on the high school property, if in fact that is the decision. I'd love to have the buses retained, but I have to say that- I'd love to have the buses retained, but I have to say that I'm also concerned that you're going to take away land, two acres of land that could be used for future purposes, whether it's green space, whether it's athletic fields, or some other purpose. I agree with the idea of using the land at the school facilities for education. There's also concerns with pollution. Diesel buses do pollute. The idea of natural gas buses or electric are very nice. Electric buses are very expensive, upwards of a half a million dollars apiece. So lastly, the doubts of whether we're going to have CHIPS concerns and loss of revenue from Mass State, or whether at the end we're not going to be able to build there because of Water Conservancy District or whatever it is, I have to say that I recommend voting against this article and ask everyone's support in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number three.
David Carrigan, 281 Els North Street.
Please proceed.
We are going to buy a bus yard tonight, one way or another. Whether we use it or First Student uses it, we're going to buy a bus yard. The smart thing to do is to build a bus yard up in the backyard here. You can start tomorrow. The equipment's out there. You could bulldoze the site on the corner of Route 2 and the railroad tracks. You've got all this gravel out there. You've got all the scrapers and dozers out there. You could level out a site and park the buses there in a couple of weeks. Because they're not, it's just a hole in the ground out there right now. The prices that you have for outsourcing are based on using a bus yard on this property. It's gone. It's filled with gravel. The fence is still there, but the bus yard's filled with gravel. So whether you go with DBus, they keep their buses in Westford. You're going to have to pay more money on the contract to deadhead those buses back and forth to their bus yard in Westford every day. First Student keeps their buses in Northborough. It's even further. And Durham keeps their buses over in Framingham. You're going to pay more money deadheading empty buses to and from this town than we're paying to deadhead buses to Acton. It's going to cost you. The simple solution is, put the bus yard up in the backyard where it's been. It's been on this property for almost 40 years. It hasn't, they haven't leaked a drop of oil. There's nothing in the well water. There's been no complaints about smoke. You're putting the bus yard up in the back corner along the railroad tracks and Route 2. There's no houses, and you're moving them away from the people on Bristol's Hill Road. It's the simple solution. It's the common sense solution. I encourage the school committee to think about this. And one more thing, and I don't have any more time. The town of Carlisle needs to look at the regional school district providing transportation to them, just like Acton and Boxborough do it. It'd be cheaper in the long run for Carlisle to use their buses that they own now than to lease another set of buses that are over in Bedford.
I'm sorry, I have to ask. Yes, thank you. Microphone number four, and then we'll go to the gym.
Hi, my name's Julianne Cancio. I live on Bristol's Hill Road. I live in the tan house that's right behind that big pile of dirt that is there right now, 40 feet from that pile. Up until a few weeks ago, I would be able to sit outside. I'm an artist, and I work at home. Right now, I can't sit outside. I can't open my windows. I can't stay in my house without feeling the rattle and the rumble and the noise. While I know that it's temporary and the school is going to be beautiful when it's built, I'm willing to sacrifice that. But I don't feel that it's right to make the neighbors, and I'm talking for myself, but sacrifice my peace, my environment, my clean air, and everything else that you don't want to put on the Walden Pond plot up there on the landfill, for the same reasons that you don't want to do that. You don't want to do that to me or anybody else that's right next to me. I need you to think about that before you make a decision. Think about your neighbors. And I'm not talking about 40 yards. I'm talking about 40 feet, 38 buses, 40 cars, diesel pumps, fueling tanks, all of this happening six days a week from 5:00 a.m. in the morning until sometimes 8:00 or 9:00 at night. It has to be lit. It has to be secured. It has to be way more than what you think you remember seeing up there on that hill before, because there are new codes, there are new things that you have to do now. But I really would appreciate if everybody would consider that. And I'm just saying that because I'm going to have to leave, because my house is going to be affordable housing when you build a bus depot there. So thank you. Please vote no.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the gymnasium, please.
Hello, my name is Patrick Everett. I live 15 Sto Street, and we all know.
Mr. Everett.
Sorry.
Mr. Everett, please proceed.
We all know that the best place for the buses is at the school, minor things. We keep on hearing silly reasons for them not being there, like they have a long time to get warm in the winter. Well, have we heard of electric heaters that we could warm them up with? That would save a lot of gasoline. Now, you know, we hate to see buses and trucks idle, 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 when an electric heater could get them up to speed and save a lot of gas at the same point. If we just throw away all these silly reasons for not putting them there, then we could buckle through and work out how to do it properly and place it on the site where it'd make most sense to do it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to microphone one in the cafeteria.
Mr. Moderator. Jimmy Twofeathers, 303 Commonwealth Avenue. I'm on the West Concord Advisory Committee, speaking for myself. Got a couple of questions, because I'm trying to get some clarity around Carlisle and Concord. The buses that are used for the high school, I understand some buses are used for Bedford for Carlisle. I'm trying to understand, what buses, does Carlisle, do we bus them? That's my first question. How does that work out, and how do we mitigate the expenses, and who pays for what? And the second thing is, we've turned down the first two articles, and what happens if we turn down this article? Where do the buses go? Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Paul Horowitz, Hayward Mill Road, 173 Hayward Mill Road. I rise to call the question.
I'm sorry?
I'm calling the question.
Call the question. I see. So we've had a, the question has been called. That's a motion to conclude debate on Article 14 and come to a vote. So we're voting now only on whether to continue discussion or whether to conclude discussion and come to vote. This requires a 2/3 vote. All those who would like to conclude discussion, please raise your colored ballots.
W. Ikiewicz, Concord.
Thank you very much. All those who would like to continue discussing, please raise yours. I see from the monitors and hear that it passes overwhelmingly by way more than 2/3 in each of the three halls separately. So we now come to the vote on Article 14. To restate, if I could ask, order in the House, please. Article 14, Ms. Hamm moves that the town request that the school committees rebuild or replace on the regional high school property the transportation department in full, the way that it has been. Again, this is an advisory vote. It's a request. It requires a simple majority, only not a 2/3 majority as the two previous ones. All who are in favor of Article 14, please raise your colored voting ballots.
An overwhelming majority, at least here in front of us.
Oh, yeah. I can't.
In favor of Article 14.
Thank you very much. All who are opposed to Article 14, please raise your ballots.
I can, maybe under 20 people.
Thank you very much. I declare that it passes by an overwhelming majority in all three rooms. Is there a motion to adjourn until tomorrow evening, a second? Thank you so much for remaining and your quality discussion. Good night.